Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Twin Falls City Council Meeting for Monday, April 10th. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd like to invite our Boy Scouts, I think maybe there were a couple of Cub Scouts thrown in there too, to come forward and lead us in the pledge. For those of you wishing to join us, please stand.
(Inaudible)
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 And before you boys all go sit down, if you would please swing by the microphone over here at the podium, tell us who you are, which troop you're with, and if you're here working on one of your merit badges this evening, please, which one?
I'm Caleb Gorley, we're with Troop Four, and we're here to speak about the Refugee Center.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm Ethan Sumption, and we're also here for the Refugee Center, so, and I'm working on my Eagle project for, to build a bike shed for the Refugee Center.
Thank you.
I'm Stephen Thuisen, and we're here for the Refugee Center, and we're with Troop Four.
Thank you.
I'm Colby Gorley, and I'm with Troop Four, and we're here for the Refugee Center.
I'm Kyler Western, and I'm here with Troop Four for the Refugee Center.
I'm Porter St. Clair, and I'm here for the Refugee Center.
I'm Asher Gerch from Troop Four, and I'm here for the Refugee Center.
I'm Blake Crandall from Troop Four, here for the Refugee Center.
I'm Colton Ward from Troop Four, here for the Refugee Center.
I'm Logan Pitter, Troop Four, here for the Refugee Center.
I'm Crew Peterson, here from Troop Four, for the Refugee Center.
Great, thank you very much. I would like to call the meeting into order, we do have a quorum of the council, all seven members are here this evening. Mr. Rothweiler, are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Council, there are no amendments this evening.
Thank you. We have no proclamations this evening, so next is general public input, so if you were, if you would like to address the council on an item that is not on this evening's agenda, now's an opportunity to come forward and speak about that. Otherwise, we will have an opportunity for public input following the first item on the agenda, which is the welcoming city presentation, so if there's anyone wishing to address the council on an item not on the agenda, you may please come forward. Mr. Edwards. I would remind everyone for the public input session, please approach the microphone on the podium, state your name and address, and whether you're a resident or a property owner in the city, and then proceed with your input, and we're going to limit that to three minutes per person this evening. Mr. Edwards.
My name is Terry Edwards, I live in Jerome, I have property in Twin Falls, and I'm here about the Safe City Proclamation.
If everybody hasn't gotten one of these, and might have them, I would be more than glad to get it to you.
The Safe City Proclamation is a proclamation that treats everybody equally in the state, in the city, and state, and the county, and our country. I presented this to the City Council last Monday, and yet haven't heard anything about whether or not they're receptive to this or not. So, what I'd like to do is, I'd like you all to read it, and if you don't have one, I'd like to make sure you get one, I don't want to take the time to read it to each of, each one of you, but you can go back online and read the, or view the video from previous City Council Meeting, it will be in there, the presentation. What I'm concerned about is that by putting people in different categories, instead of all residents, citizens, what we're doing is we're setting aside precedent, we're setting aside precedent that everybody is created equal and has equal rights. Now, the, my concern was about the sanctuary city, and I know this is not termed a sanctuary city, but it's surprising to me that we have a scout troop here that are in favor of the Refugee Center, and I don't know that they know a whole lot about it.
So, Mr. Edwards, if you want to speak about the welcoming resolution, that's on the agenda coming up, and you're welcome to speak on that.
Okay, okay.
So, this is for items not on the agenda.
I'll do that also.
Thank you.
I would, I would mention that the fact that when, when we talk about people coming here and impacting the city, this proclamation is to highlight the fact that law enforcement has taken an oath, all city officials have taken an oath to carry out the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho, as well as their, their oath of office, which states that they will treat everybody fairly and do their job the best of their abilities. So, I would just have you take a look at this, read it, if you have any questions, you're welcome to call me and talk to me about it, I just want to know where the City Council stands.
Thank you, and as I've shared last week, we'll-
I'm waiting.
We're taking that under advisement, and we will have some discussion about that.
Okay.
So, probably not this evening.
Okay.
I appreciate you having the patience to wait a week since you presented it to us.
Okay, I'm waiting.
I just gave you the answer, sir.
I'm still waiting, I've got 11, 10, 9, 8-
All right, wonderful.
Thank you, I'm still waiting.
Greg Lanting?
Well, I just wanted to comment, the other resolution that's on here has been working through the system for probably at least a month, maybe longer, before it got, it came to this point, so, it does take time for it to get vetted and then come back to, possibly, if it even is, is allowed to come back to us, it does take time, a week's not enough.
Okay. And, and to clarify, we don't have an actual resolution in front of us this evening, we have a presentation.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on any items not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one, we will move on with the regular agenda, the first item is the Consent Calendar, council wishes. Suzanne Hawkins?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
A motion by Suzanne Hawkins, seconded by Ruth Pierce, to approve the consent calendar, is there any discussion? Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Suzanne Hawkins?
Yes.
Nikki Boyd?
Yes.
Sean Berger?
Yes.
Chris Tockington?
Yes.
Greg Lanting?
Yes.
Christopher Reed?
Yes.
Ruth Pierce?
Yes. Motion passed at 7-0, so I do see there was one person who had signed up for the Church in the Park item that was on the consent calendar, so, that's been taken care of now, so, if you don't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to sneak out. So, the first item on the agenda, and our items for consideration this evening, is presentation of a welcoming city resolution, and we have Dr. Mark Crandall. Dr. Crandall, and I know you have a couple of the scouts you'd like to introduce to join you as well.
Thank you for having us here, we're grateful to be here, and as you know, we are here in support of the CSI Refugee Program and the welcoming city resolution, we're going to take just a few minutes to explain why we're here and what we're asking the council to do. I'm going to turn the time to our scouts, Ethan Sumption and Caleb Gorley.
My name is Ethan Sumption, I'm 14, I'm working on my Eagle project, I'm a proud member of the Snake River Council Troop Four. I noticed right away that, right away that the Refugee Center needed a bike shed to, like, safely store their bikes and provide bikes for people who need it for transportation to, like, work or school or whatever they need, and so, that's what I would, one, what I would like to do.
So, I'm Caleb Gorley, I'm 15, and I'm an Eagle Scout in Troop Four. I had the pleasure of working with the CSI Refugee Center last fall for my Eagle project. When I was looking for something to do for my project, I noticed that they had no way to practice for their Idaho driver's test, so I contacted Goody Motor and arranged to have a car donated to them, to the center, and then I took some of the scout troop over to Goody Motor and did a few hours of service, and I just, I loved working with their Refugee Center, and I loved the people there as well.
Well, thanks Caleb and Ethan, we have great scouts, I think they're great examples to all of us. To the first question of why we are here, why does this issue matter so much to us, I think you need to know a little bit more about us and who we are. As you know, Boy Scout troops are sponsored by organizations, so each troop has a sponsoring organization, usually a church congregation. In this area, almost all the scout troops are organized and sponsored by LDS wards, just like ours, and if you're familiar with church history or the Mormon pioneers, you'll know why that issue really hits home to us. And so, in the 1800s, the early church members and Joseph Smith were driven from state to state, New York, to Ohio, to Missouri, to Illinois, trying to escape persecution. In Illinois, he was killed by an angry mob, and then Brigham Young took the rest of the church and left the United States trying to escape. They went to Utah and settled Salt Lake City, which at the time was northern Mexico, and so today, we call them Mormon pioneers, but they were American refugees in every sense of the word, and that is part of why that issue hits home especially to us, it's why, part of why we feel so strongly about helping refugees and preserving religious freedom for all, in all religions. Now, there's a lot of other reasons to support the Refugee Center and a welcoming resolution, there's a lot of other people involved that would love to see this pass, including the City Council, including other cities. For example, the City Council in Boise unanimously passed a welcome resolution just a few months ago, the City Council in Ketchum did the same. This symbolic gesture is what we're asking the City Council to approve. Our Refugee Center is one of only two centers in Idaho, and their numbers are declining. For example, about six months ago, we could expect 110,000 refugees coming into the United States, now, it's about 50,000. In Twin Falls, that number's also half of what it was. One Refugee Center in Boise closed their doors in February. Our Refugee Center is an important part of our community, it's been here for almost 30 years, and has provided, through the United Nations and official channels, a new start to thousands of families from all over the world. Now, this statement is a symbolic statement, it does not have a financial, fiscal impact, it doesn't have a policy impact, it might not improve, or it might not increase the numbers of refugees coming here, I don't know if it'll change national policy, I doubt that it will, but I can tell you, it might change the people in this room tonight, it might change some of the people in our city, and I hope that it will send a strong message through the media that we support the center and that we are a welcoming city. I grew up in Twin Falls, and I have always felt safe, I have always felt welcome, we want everyone to feel the same, and I hope that our City Council will pass the resolution, reaffirm that Twin Falls always has been a welcoming city, and will continue to be so, and that we value all of our residents regardless of refugee status, immigration status, or religion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crandall, thank you Ethan and Caleb, I appreciate the presentation. I know we have a number of folks who would like to provide some input on this issue this evening as well. I grabbed the first sign-up sheet that was back there, if you didn't sign the first one, there is another sign-up sheet, if you're wishing to address the council, you're welcome to, excuse me, to sign up there.
Mr. Wilson.
So, we are going to ask folks to please keep their comments limited to three minutes, thank you, sir. Councilman Reed has a screen he'll put up here that'll help you keep an eye on that time, and we'll just go through the list as, as folks have signed up here. So, first I have Ron James, and again, a reminder, just to keep your comments to three minutes, please state your name and address for the record, and whether you are a resident or property owner in the city of Twin Falls.
My name's Ron James, my address is 1155 Plainview Drive, I'm a Twin Falls homeowner. Well, please allow me to share with you, for the sake of providing some historical context, a discomforting incident from Twin Falls' early history that I dug up while I was researching years ago, researching Chinese immigrants, who, along with other immigrants such as Herman Stricker, Tom Bell, the Hanson's, the Larson's, founded the Magic Valley. This is from the April 14th, 1905 issue of the Twin Falls News, predecessor of the Times News, and during the previous September 1904, a lone Chinese man, in search of new opportunity, disembarked from the stagecoach that had brought him to the recently established Twin Falls from the railroad station of Shoshone. Now, the Twin Falls News reported that the fact of his arrival soon became known, and there was a hurried conference, and within an hour of his arrival, a group of local citizens approached the Chinese man, took him to a restaurant, bought him, quote, "the best meal the town afforded," and then offered the services of the local liveryman, who provided a team of horses and carriage, complete with driver. Just as the Chinaman, I'm quoting now, and I want to emphasize, the term Chinaman is racially derogatory, it's a racist term, I'm quoting from the Twin Falls News now, when I use that term. Just as the Chinaman was beginning to think he had struck the greatest stamp of his life, the locals informed him that they wanted to take a little ride, wanted him to take a little ride with us. So, near sundown, the Twin Falls citizens escorted the Chinese man down to the Blue Lakes Ferry. The Chinese man was then taken as far as the middle of the river, where the ferry was then secured for the night. And the Times, the Twin Falls News then states, "As the weather was warm, the unwelcome visitor did not suffer through having to sleep on the soft side of a plank. In the morning, the Chinese man was allowed to land on the north side, and there commanded to hit the breeze for Shoshone and tell other Chinese that Twin Falls would not welcome them either." Nine months later, on April 13th, 1905, the city of Twin Falls was officially incorporated, I gave you all copies, and then, and then the next day that was reported, and then on page four was this article titled, "Why No Chinamen Are Found in Twin Falls," containing the story I just recounted. The article faithfully and unabashedly represents the prevailing sentiments of the Twin Falls community toward non-whites at the time by stating, quote, "The idea that Chinamen are a factor in civilization is not entertained here." Twin Falls News, 1905. So, now the question before the council, rhetorical question is, which narrative does Twin Falls prefer to choose? We have the narrative of a community that yesterday in the Times News editorial, quote, "Welcomed people of all kinds where dreams come true," also illustrated in the recent New York Times article.
So, Mr. James, your, your time is up, so if you could wrap up your thought, I'd appreciate it.
Or the 1905 version in which Twin Falls is a place where the idea that latter-day Chinamen, today's refugees, Mexicans, Muslims, are a factor in civilization is not entertained. These recent attacks, or, let me guess, these are skeletons and secrets rattling around in our collective historical cellar that need to be confronted and hopefully overcome. One way would be for the City Council to proclaim Twin Falls a welcoming city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. And while I certainly appreciate everyone trying to be supportive of those who are speaking, if we could please hold the applause to get through the comments, that would be appreciated. So, next, I have Mark Crandall, so, you already spoke. Terry Edwards, did you wish to speak on this issue as well?
Oh, can I speak again? I was going to wait until the second public input.
Well, if you have input on this item, I might suggest that you present it now. If you don't have item, input on this item, then you're welcome to come up later.
I might mention that it's kind of contradictory, the first gentleman spoke and said how we're always a welcoming city, and it sounds to me like the historian finds out that we weren't. If I had a bowl of M&amp;M's and offered them to you and your children, and then you found out that one of those M&amp;M's was poisoned, and either one of your children or yourself may die, would you grab a handful? I doubt it. Also, I might mention that what we're thinking about doing with this institution of refugee, here is, are the refugees here, my, my parents are second generation, I'm third generation refugee, and they've contributed to this city or this state, this country, but these refugees today aren't refugees of today, the refugees of today are different, and it's not because of their ethnicity, it's because of their culture. They're, they're from another country. They don't assimilate. The problem that we have with that is that they're above the law. As we can see by the cases that have just been litigated, we have three sexual assault refugees that have admitted to it. And you guys kind of ignored it for months on end. The other thing is, is that we have another one that's pending trial. These people come, they're the poison pill. There might be only one of them. The problem being is that we don't know who those are, those are. And I don't care what it says in the documentation that ZZ puts out, they can't be vetted. So what we've got here is people wandering around. We don't know when they're going to explode. And we know that they're costing the city much. For every $1 that they earn, or they pay in taxes, they get $4 in benefits. So where are you guys going to come up with that money if we extend this to bigger numbers? And thankfully, there's only 38 have been here since January 1st, been admitted into Twin Falls, which is incorrect on Mr. Crandall's letter. It's 38. We've had 38 since January 1st.
In the calendar year, but not in the fiscal year. Thank you. Rick Narabout.
Rick Narabout, 195 River Vista Place. I am a property owner in Twin Falls. So I am an employee of the Idaho Dairymen's Association and we are proud supporters of immigration reform and that includes supporting the Refugee Resettlement Center. That's something that I've spoke to this council about before and we are supportive of this effort and supportive of a resolution that would declare Twin Falls a welcoming city. I wanted to spend the majority of my time today talking about other leadership roles I have in this community and support from those organizations for this effort. I am also president of the Rapid Soccer Association. We are a athletic club of about 400 athletes, ranging in age from five to 19. And we are supportive of this effort. We have a number of immigrants and refugees that are part of our club. They represent our parents, of our athletes, our athletes themselves, our coaches, our referees. Our club would not be the same club without immigrants and refugees. They make up a significant portion of our club and they are very good members of our club. We've tried to embrace being a welcoming club in the past. Every year, we host a soccer tournament. If you come to our soccer tournament at Sunway Soccer Complex, you will see as you come into the complex, it's lined with American flags. And between those American flags, you will find flags of other nationalities. And those are representative of our refugees in our community and members of our soccer club. And we feel that's very important to show that support for those individuals. Lastly, I want to address, address you all on something that's a little bit closer to home. So I'm the father of a biracial family. We've lived in Twin Falls for 15 years. We've felt welcome all of those 15 years. No situation is perfect. You do have your awkward moments. But those are far outweighed by the welcoming environment that Twin Falls and the surrounding communities provide. And I think this resolution is important. If I look back and consider, based on the publicity that this community's had the last year, would I make the same decision to move my family here today as I did 15 years ago? And I was an outsider looking in, I'm not sure I have an answer for you. So I think this resolution is important to be able to send that explicit message that we are a welcoming community regardless of race, religion, or nationality. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. So next, so Ethan and Caleb, you already both presented. Darrell, is it Weber or Weaver?
Weber.
Weber. Darrell Weber.
I'm Darrell Weber. I live at 1152 Southview Drive and I own the property there. I wanted to speak tonight in, in support of the resolution. I want to start by addressing some of the remarks already made saying that refugees are not M&amp;M's. They're not pills. They're human beings. And refugees enrich our community. My husband and I moved here to Twin Falls about three years ago. And two of the reasons why we felt that Twin Falls was a place we wanted to make our home was one, because there was a college here, but two, because of the refugee center. And we wanted to move to a community that had that kind of diversity. I'm an English as a Second Language teacher. I currently teach at the college. But previously, I did teach some classes at the refugee center. And I love my work because I get to work with people, with immigrants, refugees or otherwise, who really understand the opportunity they have. They have experienced extreme hardships in their lives. They've experienced extreme loss. And they understand that if they come here, they get a chance and they work so hard. And, and it's partly that work ethic that I think enriches our community. I'm thinking of one student at the refugee center about a year ago that I was working with who was working as a planter. He was planting on farms. I remember at one point, they were planting carrots. So he was working all day. They started at dawn, he told me, and he was bending over and planting carrots in the sun in the fields all day. And then he had my English class at night. And he would come after spending the whole day in the fields working and come to English class because he wanted to improve his English, because he wanted to be part of this community and he wanted to contribute to the community. So the refugees are people that want to become a part of our community. They're not people that set themselves apart. They work hard and they bring wonderful diversity to our community. And so those are some of the reasons why I am in support of this resolution.
Thank you. Next, we have Bird Golei.
Hi, I'm Bird Golei. I got a piece of commercial property at 2140 Eldridge. I'm kind of a duck out of water tonight, but I thought I should come and talk to you folks about something, about this welcoming committee. We've always been a welcoming city. We don't have to have a title. Where are you guys at? Why do you got to have a title? Once you have a title, you always got the title. Governor, general, private sergeant, whatever. And I, I don't, I don't really think we need a title to have Twin Falls a welcoming center. If you want to go back in our history, we welcomed everybody. Everybody that came here was welcome. We're a different time now in America. Things are different in America. So I think we don't need to have a title. We're just a lovely city. We've got a lot of lovely people. We've got a lot of neat things, including the College of Southern Idaho and our city. I just think this is, there is, these, these Boy Scouts are on a mission. They're doing their job. I don't really think they know what, what's going on in the world. They can't know. I don't know and I'm 77 years old. I know a 15-year-old kid don't know nothing, other than what he's told. And so I, I just think, why are they doing this? Is this for money? Hey, guess what happens? If our government stops the refugees from coming in here, how much monies are going to cost our community? They don't have a job. These people don't have a job. And these people here aren't treated bad that comes as refugees. They got better than people who work here. They make more money than people that work here every day. We're a welcoming community. And I'm just concerned that once you put this title on there, it's for a long time, you guys. So I would really consider not putting this title on our city. It's Twin Falls, Idaho, not Twin Falls, Idaho welcoming you. You can welcome anybody. And so I'm, I'm just concerned, I realize that these refugees that are here, there's all kinds of debate. So be it. I can't, I can't stop it. But just remember, we've been a great city for many, many years with our ups and downs. And I know each and every one of you are wanting to do the right thing. But I, I think that you should probably give this some real consideration and not try to make it up all at once because you got a group of people in here that wants to have a, a title to our city. It's not going to help us a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tris Woodhead.
I'm, can you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Tris Woodhead. I live at 251 Fifth Avenue East, Twin Falls, and we own our house. I've taught school for more than 40 years. And a lot of the children I had from other countries were really wonderful. I had a little Cambodian girl here in Twin. She went to Yale and got straight A's and she works for the State Department. I had another child visit me, well, she's not a child anymore. I had her visit a couple of weeks ago and she works on Wall Street. And when she and her brother and sister came to Twin, none of them could speak English at all. They just spoke Spanish. And now she's working for a bank that makes sure that mortgages are given to people who need mortgages. I think that it's very important for us to set a good example for our children. And we should set that example by welcoming people. And if it's got a title, that's great. Because I think most of the teachers in Twin would be proud to be able to tell their classes that we are officially a welcoming city and that all people are equal. So when I came to Twin from Southern California, my impression was most of the people in Twin Falls were plump and white. And now it's, the city has improved a great deal. The more I look around and see different kinds of faces, the happier I am. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have David Woodhead.
David Woodhead, 251 Fifth Avenue East, Twin Falls, and I co-own our house. She, she's my wife, for those of you who don't know. Tough act to follow. I just want to come tonight and give my support to this concept. Thank you, Boy Scouts, for doing this. It's hard to say no to Boy Scouts, so you probably have a good chance here. I've, I've been very happy to see the transformation that's happened to Twin Falls. I remember one time when Tris was teaching at Bickle, I got carted off to these carnivals from time to time. And I happened to notice that all of a sudden, it looked like the whole world was in Bickle School because the refugee program had started. And so we started to have people from Cambodia in particular. In fact, that girl, little girl, that's no longer a little girl, the one that went to Yale, that whole family became our best friends, pretty much. And we watched them grow and prosper in Twin Falls. And that's been the case with pretty much all of the refugees that I've ever had any experience with them. I've, I've met several of them. And just recently, I've rented space in my other property in Old Town to an Iraqi refugee who's going to open a Mid-East restaurant. And I'm very proud of the fact that that's about to happen because I love that kind of food. So look forward to that and please, call us a welcoming city.
Thank you, David. And next I have Julie DeWolf.
Twin Falls County. I own several homes and properties in the area.
Thank you.
Mayor Berger, Vice Mayor Hopkins, Councilman Lanting, Reed, Talkington, Councilwoman Boyd and Pierce. Assuming that each of you have both sworn and signed your oath of office according to the U.S. Code, you are under obligation. According to Idaho state legislation, Title 74, if you're familiar with that, is about transparent and ethical government. Ethical is relating to moral principles. Moral principles are rules of conduct, right or wrong. The policy and the purpose is hereby declared that the position of the public official at all levels of government is a public trust and the public interest. You are to protect the integrity of the government throughout the state of Idaho, assure independence, impartiality, and honesty. You are to inform citizens of the existence of personal interests which may conflict with the interest between the official public trust and private citizen, et cetera. We go on in Chapter 4. You are required, a public official, shall not take any official action or make a formal decision or formal recommendation concerning any matter where he has a conflict of interest and has failed to disclose such conflict as provided in this section. If you're uncertain about what those conflicts of interest are, you may want to look up this code before you take a vote. If he is an elected public official of the county or municipality, he shall disclose the nature of the potential conflict of his interest prior to acting on the matter and shall be subject to the rules of the body of which he or she is a member. If he or she is appointed as a public official of the county or municipality, he shall prepare a written statement describing the matter required to be acted upon and the nature of the potential conflict and shall deliver the statement to his appointing authority. A conflict of interest means any official or any decision or recommendation by a person acting in a capacity as a public official, the effect of which would be a private pecuniary benefit to that person or a member of that household or a business with which the person or the member or the person's household is associated unless the pecuniary benefit arises out of the following, an interest of the membership, et cetera, et cetera. I'm letting you know, I'm aware of that code and I hope you are. I'm going to encourage you to take it very seriously because we are going to hold you accountable. We're going to hold you accountable to the laws of Idaho. So I'm giving you peaceful notification in a public way that we will be investigating your situation specifically as it relates to you in the public interest because your decision about a welcoming city will have an effect on the people who domicile here. It is already affecting people.
Mr. Wolf, your time is up, so if you could please wrap up your point, I'd appreciate it.
You shall also receive a written letter from me as well. And it will include instructions as well as an overview of what I've just stated. Thank you.
Thank you. So that is all of the people who I have who signed up to speak on this item. If there is anyone else wishing to address the council on this item, you can now please come forward. Leah? Again, if you would please state your name and address and whether you are a property owner or resident in the city of Twin Falls and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Leah Bavayan. I'm a resident, property owner, small business owner, concerned citizen, school board trustee for the best school district in the state of Idaho. I am also a proud M&amp;M and a former refugee that was resettled here by the CSI Refugee Center. I was very emotional as the line of our Boy Scouts was lined up here. These young, 15, 14, 13-year-old young men who don't know better about the world and who might just be paid to do this, right, kind of was implied. But I was so proud and overwhelmed with emotion to see leadership in our city begin in their generation. I think that gives a lot of hope to all of us living in this country. It also reminds me of a quote that, and this, I hope the young men take this away with them and go further and outside of just this cause. But there is a huge difference between being elected and getting things done. And these young men today demonstrated that they are leading not only our community to come out of the closet after 30 years of having a program and people adopted into their community to actually be proud of that and to be proud of that in a way that it becomes a staple of this community in a very proud way and not just something tucked away and invisible. But they are also shaping their future, the future they want their community to be by influencing and playing a role in that decision. So it makes me very proud to hear this conversation take place here tonight. I only wish that my grandparents were alive, who also came to this country as refugees here to Twin Falls and contributed. I only wish they were alive to hear the community that adopted them be proud of it 15 years ago, 10 years ago, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, and that it was not just led by Boy Scouts, but actually led by the many leaders that have decided to, to bring us here. Whether it's motivated by earning a project badge or whether it's motivated by saving an industry that depends on refugees and immigrant workers, I think that regardless of what is the motivation, at the end of the day, I think that it needs to be highlighted that this city saves lives. And I'm standing before you all today, I only speak for myself when I say this, but if it wasn't for the program at CSI, we, I would not be alive. My family would not be alive. if it wasn't for the program at CSI, I would not be alive, my family would not be alive. I've had that chance, I could become silent about speaking on this subject, but it's important that I speak on behalf of those people that also are waiting and surviving, and then contributing to the communities they're adopted to. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. So I do, I do have another sign-up sheet here with a few other names, I have Willie And then I'll get to the folks who didn't have a chance to sign up too.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Willie Bachma, I'm a dairy farm owner, south of Twin Falls, my dairy is at 3374 North, 3100 East, the only dairy on Eastland Drive. Anyways, my dairy and all the industries that are affected by my dairy's output, which produces enough milk to feed this entire city, every man, woman, and child in this town can have milk products from my dairy every day, and it would fulfill your daily requirements for dairy products. Anyways, my dairy would not function without immigrant labor, for one thing, and with the diversity of people that help this community, the industries that are represented by farming in general would not survive without refugee help and also immigrant help. So, I'm in favor of this resolution, and I would ask you to vote in favor of it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Karen McCarthy.
Hi, I'm a local resident, the bank and I own my home at 189 Buchanan Street, I've been a resident here for 32 years approximately. The negative side, when I was moving to Twin Falls, Idaho, some people told me, I think, thinking that I was white and plump and would fit in well, that I would be comfortable it was mostly white, there weren't many blacks, and the Mexicans knew their place. I got here, my parents came to visit, and being from a town, a small town in Crawfordsville that had the Grand Wizard of the KKK residing in it, my father read my newspaper, The Times News, and was astounded and said, Karen, I thought journalism like this had gone away in the 50s, I have read nothing like this, where every single Hispanic person was defined by where they came from, but not white people. That's the bad news. The wonderful news was, I think the very first house guests we had on arriving here in the summer of 1985, were two Yugoslavian refugees that my husband met at a music store, and they all played music together, and we could speak very little at all, and made symbols to each other, like you want to come eat, and they played together for hours, and it was a friendship that lasted for years. Delighted to have my daughters, my children, whoops, sorry, son, my children grew up with refugees, who, you know, as the different waves came through, and I would say, first it was Eastern Europeans, and my daughter had close, close friends from that community, and as it's progressed. Those are the delightful news. I'm a member of the Twin Falls United Methodist Church, and in our basement, the Burundian African Church holds their worship services. We got involved with them, I spent a summer helping learn English and the ABCs with a group of them, got to know them. A joyous time is to sneak into our church when they are meeting and listen to their worship and their music. It is a delightful, wonderful experience, and we've gotten to know them by sharing our facility with them through the years. I am a local attorney, and I have had the joy of getting to represent several refugee families with some housing cases, but also with guardianship cases, and that's where you really find their stories, representing children who need guardianships from older relatives because their family is dead, or can't be found, or are lost. I have read the UN documents of all the background checks that these children went through to get here, and the efforts made to try and find parents and locate them. I have read the documents of their vetting. It's been a privilege to meet them and the families who they have been here with, and I'm delighted with this side of Twin Falls, and I urge you to vote that we be a welcoming city.
Thank you. Excuse me, next I have Stacy Hallmark.
My name's Stacy Hallmark, and I live at 2434 Ninth Avenue East, and I am here to just show my support. I grew up in the Magic Valley, but lived in New York City for 12 years, and recently moved back, and raised three children there, and as you can imagine, there's such a diversity of cultures and peoples and religions in New York City, and I really, growing up, I didn't have that. And I really loved living in that city and experiencing the richness that can come, and I know that, I know that there, I understand that people are afraid, it's human nature to be afraid of things we don't know or understand, or things that are different, and so I do understand that, that there is a fear among some here. But I truly believe that if people could be exposed and get to know, and that there would be a greater understanding and friendship and bond and love, and I would love for my kids to continue to be raised in a community that has diversity. And I know that, there are lots of statistics I could share, you know, that, sorry. I believe that nobody's ever been killed by a terrorist attack by a refugee in the United States. And I know that we hear all this scary news in the world, and there's always something happening, and something going on, but it happens, even in these small, I guess, it happens everywhere. It's universal. Unfortunately, bad things happen sometimes, but I don't think we can live our lives in fear. And I believe that Twin Falls would be well-served to be a welcoming community, to have that title, and I would be proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so again, I have hit the end of those who had signed up, so if there are other folks who would wish to address the council, come on forward, come on forward, sir.
I'm Monty Crandall, 3102 Boma Estates in Twin Falls, I own property here. I'm an obstetrician-gynecologist in town, I came here in 1985. During that time period, I've delivered almost 6,000 babies here, and many of those people have been refugees. I think most of the refugees have come to our office for care, and I've met hundreds of them, and I have not met one of the refugees that I thought was a bad person. They were all good people, every one of them. I didn't feel threatened by any one of them. And now, as time has gone on, I've seen their kids grow up, and now they're coming and having babies with our office, and many of them are coworkers at my hospital, they're good protective citizens of our community. And I just hope that we can be supportive of them, and show by supporting this resolution that we are good decent people here in Twin Falls. As these refugees have lived here, they've become a part of us, and I think they are a part of us, and I'm proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Silver.
Hi, I'm Deborah Silver, I live at 1401 Poplar, and I do own property in this town. A couple years ago, when this issue became, came to the front page, I have to tell you that we had 200 people sign up in support of the Refugee Center within about 36 hours. So, I do have a group called Magic Valley Refugee Advocates, sorry about my voice, but our community supports Refugee Center. I walked last summer, and knocked on over 5,000 registered voters' doors last summer and fall, and I met so many, they're not refugees anymore, they're citizens, they are voters, and they are a big part of this community. And it was amazing to me that so many were registered to vote, and if they were on my list, it means they are voters. There are quite a few people in this town who are eligible to vote, but who don't take advantage of that. So we have people who come here, and we offer them hope and help from incredible, incredible this background stories here. This community supports the Refugee Center, those citizens support this city, and I am proud to be one of the supporters. I must say that it is, most of the faith communities in this community, they are big supporters, and I appreciate so much what this troupe is doing, and I encourage you to support their resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Yes, in the back, come on forward.
My name is Anna Graff, and I'm a resident of Twin Falls at 232 Locust Street North, Twin Falls, Idaho. I don't have much to say, but I do want to come up and win my voice to this and support. I have a son, I'm a single mom, and I look forward to raising him in a community that is open and welcoming to other cultures, to other people. He's going to get to grow up with access to a much richer culture than what I grew up in, in the same area. And one of the ways that that happens is through this program and this opening.
Let him speak. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm afraid, I'm not sure what's going to happen, you might get Twinkle Twinkle Little Star. All that to say, I wanted to win my voice and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this issue? Yes, Heather.
Jessie.
Jessie, sorry.
My name is Jessie Stroop, I live at 3161 East, 3200 North, I'm a little young to own property in Twin Falls. I'm not going to say yea or nay on anything you guys are going to do, but I am going to ask you, what are you welcoming these people to? I know I've brought up this issue a couple times before, but the housing that they're living in is pretty terrible, and nothing's really changing. So, I just encourage you, before you say anything about being a welcoming city, you check what you're welcoming people to. Are you welcoming them to a better life, are you welcoming them to crummy apartments, rusting water pipes, exposed electrical outlets that can harm people, cramping them into these apartments down here, like they're sardines, really? And that's a big deal, so, that's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Reagan Larson, I am a resident of Twin Falls, and I'm with that scouting troop over there. Now, I am proud that I live in this city, Twin Falls, and I do believe that these refugees are looking for a better place. Yes, there may be that one M&amp;M that is poison and does do all these bad different things, but that's what you're going to get anywhere, and we unfortunately have some of those people here in Twin Falls. Now, those people, when they're living in other countries and other places, when your alarm clock is a bomb blowing up the house next to you, you know you want to go to a better place. They're looking for a place to come, and some of them do end up here in Twin Falls. Now, what these people are wanting to do is, they want a better place where they know that they will be safe from the terrors that they have back there. Yes, we will always have those people who do have all these offenses, but they will be the ones that do have to live with that, and most oftentimes, they will end up going to jail and punishing, and get punished for their crimes. Now, I, like I said, am a Boy Scout, and us Boy Scouts live by a certain law. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Now, all of those things, they add up, and what we feel about this, I'm here supporting my fellow Scouts, one which both have Eagle Projects associated with the Refugee Center, what they are doing is they're trying to make Twin Falls a better place. And if we are a place that does allow these refugees to come, and come to a better place seeking freedom, I would be very proud to tell everybody, if I do ever leave here, saying that I came from a place that welcomed refugees and people who came here. Now, these people do have, they have bad pasts with Al Qaeda and ISIS and all these different terrors in their countries. Coming here, these people, if we were to kick them out and not allow them, those nine out of 10 people who are good, they came here seeking a better place to live, and if they can't find anywhere, then we might as well just be as those other countries, not letting them live there, and, because if they can't live here, then how will they know what good of a city and town we are? Now, this city's big brother Boise has unanimously passed this, and so obviously, they believe that there is going to be good coming from this. Now, I may be just a 15-year-old kid who doesn't know anything, but of the few things that I do know, I know that sometimes in class, if one kid does something bad, we all get punished for it. No one likes that, and that's just how these refugees are feeling, and so I am in support of allowing these people to have a better place than where they were. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There was another, yes.
My name's Tanner Beamer, and I'm a resident, I live at 1085 White Birch, and I really, I've been involved in this issue in a number of different ways. I'm a former student at the University of Idaho, and I worked on this issue a little bit during my time there, and I wasn't entirely sure if I was going to speak tonight or not, but then it became clear from some of the previous speakers that I'm not much older than these gentlemen in the scarves behind you, I'm 23 years old, it became very clear that we can't formulate good opinions, because we haven't experienced much, and call it good old-fashioned millennial rebellion, and I decided that I'd come and share a few thoughts with you in response to that. The first thing I want to talk about is something that the good doctor said in his opening, and that's something, he said, you know, maybe this won't influence national policy. And I really want to stress something to this body and those that are listening in the audience today. This town is doing something right. Rural communities across this country are disappearing, and in mass droves, young people my age are moving inward to the city, and that's something that is a national trend. But Twin Falls isn't doing that. Twin Falls is doing something right, and if you don't believe me, there's a tiny newspaper back east that decided to do a little story on us a couple days ago, actually, they're not that small, they have a daily readership of somewhere in the tens of millions, and they decided to come and talk about what we're doing right. And so, don't, don't think that this, this small gesture doesn't have impact beyond just the city limits of the city of Twin Falls. And then kind of along that, we talked about the fact that, oh, it's just a title, what does title mean? Title doesn't mean anything. Well, that's, that's also not entirely true. You know, I work a lot with the FFA organization, they were just in Twin Falls, they left last week, their state convention was here on the CSI campus, and I meet with a lot of Hispanic students, and in one of my interactions, they, they told me, you know, they're scared. They're, they're here on legal terms and legal status, but they're scared because of the way that the national media is portraying minorities in this country, and they, they say that, you know, it's, it's not that, it's not that I'm scared because of my status, I'm just scared about what other people think. And so, I guess, all that, just to reiterate, yes, it can have an influence well beyond the borders of this city, and then on top of that, yeah, it might just be a title, and to most of us, title doesn't mean anything, but to some of us, that title can mean everything. Thank you.
Yes.
Lanny Whitney, I'm a resident of Kimberly. One of my dearest friends moved here four years ago, actually, a little over four years ago, a refugee that came from Baghdad, Iraq, Iraq, she always corrects me, and, and just commenting about the conditions that the refugees might come to here in Twin Falls, this mother of four young, very young children, and father came to Twin Falls, and one of the comments that she made was that they came from a city And her experience was one of sending her children out the door in the morning, or her husband, and really, truthfully praying and hoping that she would see them at the end of the day. And so, to share what she expressed coming to Twin Falls of the safety that they felt of not hearing shootings and bombings throughout the day, is, they felt a lot of gratitude for that. And they didn't feel hard done by or upset about their conditions. They were just grateful for the couple of plastic chairs that were in the kitchen, for a roof over their heads, and for silence of not being in the midst of a bombing city and chaos and shambles of a city that is in constant warfare. And so, I think that that helps us with all the things that we have around us that we take for granted. We might get a little confused as to thinking, what are they coming to? Not to say that I don't want to improve that, because I work towards that with each of you, trying to improve what they come to. But I know that those efforts are being made on all fronts. So, I know that they're grateful to be here and I'm so glad that they're here, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, in the front.
My name's Drew Parker. I live at 838 Green Tree Way here in Twin Falls. I similarly wasn't going to get up here and say anything, but then I thought of some people that I've met and I had to. I had the privilege of living in Central Africa for a few years. And while I was over there, if I could express to you how welcome and how I was received with open arms over there regardless of my race or my nationality, I felt that I would be condemned if I didn't get up here and speak for those people that I've met and speak for their generosity. And I think us as Twin, as members of the Twin Falls community should likewise take a look at ourselves and think, if roles were changed, would we not want someone or somewhere to feel welcome? I know that there are much more yays than nays, and I just wanted to add my voice to that and to let you know that I love these people and I'm willing to welcome them as best as I can here in Twin Falls. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, in the back.
I live here in Twin Falls at 429 Buchanan Street. And I, well, no one here can not have sympathy for the refugee people, especially since we've seen the things that have happened with the gassing and everything in Syria in the last week. Your heart goes out to those people. But I don't want Twin Falls to forget about the little five-year-old girl that was sexually molested by three refugee boys. She was innocent. She didn't do anything wrong. And yet, she was assaulted by those boys. And this community did not reach out to her. She should have gotten federal and state funds. She never did. She never got counseling. I was here last week and heard KERS talk about how important it was to counsel young children shortly after they were sexually abused. She's never had counseling. Several people came and asked the council to help them find a home for this family. They still had to live next door to the boy, one of the boys who molested her, for months. And finally, some citizens in the community reached out, got her a home, got them a car, helped them get established in the community. And so, while my heart goes out to those people, too, my heart goes out to Jayla. She's had no counseling. She's had no support from the community at all. And when the council was asked to help find them a place to live, never got a response from anybody. So, my concern is the fairness. You know, everybody reaches out to the refugee community and I'm not opposed to them, but the treatment should be fair to the American citizens, too. And I want everybody to remember what happened to that little girl. Thank you.
May I?
Yes, Suzanne Hawkins.
I just want to go on the record with that. I do want you to know that I did reach out to the family. So, to say that nobody on the council tried to help when they were looking for housing or help is an unfair statement. I know that Greg Lanting took money out of his pocket to help that family. And this community stepped up with that GoFundMe page and did help. And I understand there's a lot of legal what's, and things that we don't understand as council members, and it's out of our jurisdiction. But for you to say that none of us tried to help is an unfair statement. And I just want to go on the record with that.
So, ma'am, I appreciate your comments. Can't have a debate back and forth across the room. Okay? These issues have been shared clearly. It's been communicated with the family. Again, I appreciate your frustration and concern and I thank you for sharing it with us. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on the welcoming resolution? Yes.
I'm Cindy Yarger. I live at 357 Blue Lakes Boulevard North. I'm not an owner, but I'm a renter. Anyway, a resident, though. I want to speak from just a little bit different angle. I'm an American. My parents immigrated from the Netherlands. I'm the first generation born in the U.S. But, forgive me. I have spent time overseas. And I have been welcomed in every country that I've lived in except for Honduras. And there, they don't like, or at that time, they did not like me because I was an American, an American. We tend to think that Americans are loved and welcomed everywhere in the world. They're not. They are not. But I tell you, it was really strange to go there and not be loved, not be welcomed, simply for that reason. I was an American. They were burning an American flag in the park. Children threw rocks at me and then ran. Now, I don't want anybody to come into Twin Falls and feel that they're not welcome or that we don't like them because of where they came from. We are humans, we're people. So, I would say, it doesn't even matter if they're refugees, whatever they are. Come to common ground. We are people. We are one. So, I would vote that we welcome people and that we proudly wear a title that says we are welcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this issue? Yes.
Once again, like so many people here, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I'm Bethany Rossison and I'm a resident of Twin Falls. So, I was reading over your proclamation here, Mr. Mayor, and I couldn't help but notice that there wasn't a lot of information about...
So, which resolution are you reading?
This one, for the Safe City.
So, that actually is one that was drafted by Mr. Edwards, not by the council.
Oh, okay. There was a spot here for you to sign in, so I'm sorry.
So, that's just a draft that was presented to us as another option that we might consider.
Oh, okay. Okay, there just wasn't a lot of information on it. And so, I was slightly confused how this was going to affect. I know that the troop leader mentioned that it probably would not affect a lot of things, but as we know, all of us, whenever someone moves here, there is a lot of effect. My mom moved here back about 30 years ago. And since she has moved here, I was born in Twin Falls, but since she has moved here, our population has moved from about 25,000 to now pushing 55,000. So, for me, I also have family members who look different than I do. I won't call them a different race, but we all share different characteristics. And we have experienced the love of our community, as well as the man who spoke earlier, that he has a biracial family. And I don't quite understand, I love being a welcoming city. We need to love people. They are most important. When everything else burns, people are going to last. They're the ones that are going to last and be here permanently and what we need to fight for. But I'm curious how stamping this on our city is really going to change people's minds. We've heard people on both sides of the issue. So, to me, I don't really understand what this is going to change. I think it's a good idea to strive for, to be a welcoming city, to love people and to understand that they do, they matter. But I also have a hard time looking at what's happened to, like Jayla. And looking at that issue and saying, okay, is every need being met? The larger our city becomes, the harder it is for us to take care of those individual cases. And I want that. I want that for everybody. So, when they come here, they are now someone that, me as a citizen, I take responsibility for their safety, their well-being. As a taxpayer, that's what that goes toward. And I want them to be taken care of and loved and appreciated. I don't believe that we're not a welcoming city already. And maybe I'm just kind of reiterating a lot of different ideas that people have already said. But to me, I want to be known as welcoming. But my question is as well, if this goes a step further and we become more of like a sanctuary city, what will we attract? That was my immediate thought. I had no thought of refugees. I had no thought of immigrants. I had a thought of people coming here who have done crimes in other states and decide, oh, hey, we're going to go over here, no matter if they look like me or not. So, anyway, those were just kind of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last call for anyone else who wishes to address the council. Otherwise, we'll turn it over to the council for discussion. I don't see anyone else, so. Counsel, Chris Tockington.
Been a good meeting tonight. It shows the DNA at Twin Falls. Eighty percent of you are on what I consider the right side, the light side. We always give room and time for people to speak their opinion, no matter whether we agree or disagree. And that's part of the strength of local government and our democracy. I keep hearing references to the Idaho Constitution. I have to tell you, I'm guided by the U.S. Constitution. All men are created equal. That's my guiding dogma. I've lived in a foreign country. I have been welcomed when I didn't speak the language, didn't look at them, looked like them the same way. I bring that value back to Twin Falls. But I'd like to also mention that we have a bit of history in Twin Falls that is a stigma, a dark point of our history. At the beginning of World War II, we had a Japanese concentration camp. There is a very polite language for it, but I had a secretary as a child who was incarcerated there. That is a blemish that Twin Falls will never be able to erase, but for God's sakes, we can at least learn a lesson not to judge people by how they speak, how they look, but how they act and treat others. You know, this town is 113 years old. Twin Falls was formed on the basis of opportunity, open doors, hard work, looking each other in the eye and speaking clearly and telling people what you thought and admitting mistakes. The history at Twin Falls is based on these positive American values, and I don't want to recede back into the darkness of suspicion and paranoia. The only time I've been paranoid is when I lived in that foreign country during the Cold War and I had the Cuban government trying to kill me. But we still spoke the same language and I met Cubans afterwards and some of them are almost friends now. Even the people in this audience that are speaking against a welcoming community, I try to have dialogue with, usually not successfully, but that's because I'm a left-handed Irish and that's my fault. I want you to know that Twin Falls wants to be a welcoming community, but we have to prove it. And a resolution similar to the one that Boise passed, I think, is the first stop, the first step. One other little addendum, I keep hearing the people who don't want Twin Falls to be a welcoming community complain about those people stealing jobs. Twin Falls is above full employment. Anybody that wants to have a job in Twin Falls can get a job. Don't ride that dog. Yet, don't hunt, okay? I'm in favor of a welcoming community, but I see other council wanting to speak. And let's just remember, four out of five people, more than 80% of the people representing Twin Falls' DNA, support a welcoming community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Greg Lanting.
I'd like to thank Dr. Crandall, not only for his work with the Scouts, I'm also an Eagle Scout for all of those who are there. I'm proud of that fact. And some of your Eagle Scout projects seem to be well-recognized for the city as a whole. I tended to do those for my sponsoring group, was the Hollister Presbyterian Church. And I did my projects for the church, so I wished I had expanded to the community as a whole. I also like to thank Dr. Crandall for being a leader in healthcare for this city. He helped my, he was my mother's heart doctor and I certainly appreciate his helping along that way. I too am in favor of this resolution. I believe that it will, as the one gentleman said, who needs to get a job at broadcasting, his voice was unbelievable.
Yes.
Can't remember his name right now, but he has an excellent voice. Talked about that it does mean things to certain people. And if they feel welcome, then that's enough for me right now. And I'm going to say this very clearly this time, because I said it one time before and the Times News quoted me rather poorly. We are all children of immigrants. Last time, they got it really messed up. I'm not sure how. I was like, proud to see a few Dutch people show up, because that's my background. My grandparents came from the Netherlands to the United States and actually settled in Amsterdam, Idaho, which most of you don't know where it's at, between Hollister and Rogerson out there. And they settled there because that way they could speak Dutch and not have to for most of the time. My oldest uncle actually went to school speaking no English and learned how to speak English at school. By the time my dad got there, who was the youngest child, he already knew, because his brothers and sisters all spoke English to him, because they'd learned in school. I think it's important for the city of Twin Falls to support being a welcoming city and I will gladly vote yea when that is presented to us.
Thank you, Greg. Nikki Boyd.
Diversity is really important and diversity comes in many forms. And one of the things is, when it comes to diversity, we are each responsible for educating ourselves. We are responsible for perhaps traveling, perhaps visiting. I think somebody served a mission and went to another country. It's very important for us to understand that we are very proud of America and it is a land of opportunity. It's not a guaranteed anything. People that come here, come here for a better chance at things. There's no guaranteed outcome. And there's risk in life. And sometimes when you go places, it doesn't work out, like in Honduras. That just didn't work out. But that didn't stop her from living a good, productive life. I came from a big city and I love big cities. I still do. But I chose Twin Falls. I chose Twin Falls and this is where I've raised my children. And I believe that tonight, you guys have demonstrated what a welcoming city this is. Everything from scouts to dairy farmers, to people who serve at their church. I've been a real estate agent for a long time. And I was blown away years ago by how many people drove through Twin Falls on the way to somewhere else and stayed and thought, when I, you know, retire, I'm coming here. Or, we're thinking about changing jobs, we want to look here. I hear all the time, all the time, and it amazes me how friendly everybody is to strangers here. When I first came here, I found it very friendly, but I didn't find it as welcoming because I had different kind of license plates. And my neighbor simply said, change them over, you know, get rid of those plates. But we all have experiences, but I believe that Twin Falls... But we all have experiences, but I believe that Twin Falls is a welcoming city. It has always been a welcoming city, and we have always been for all the citizens. Any oath anybody has ever taken is for the Constitution, is for the state of Idaho, and it's for all citizens. Our police pledge to serve all the citizens. We are all created equal under God. And when I read on here that, you know, we were referring to Boise, how they did this, and when it says, you know, the symbolic thing, it says that they want to be a welcoming city, but it's, right here, it is non-binding with no financial impact, but it's a powerful statement of support. And I don't think I need a welcoming city put in writing. I think we need citizens who all of us pony up, and we are welcoming citizens, and we do the acts. We don't have something on a piece of paper, because everything that these say, the safe city, the welcoming city, all of this stuff, that's how we live, that's how we do it here already, and I'm very proud of that, and I thank you all for demonstrating that to me tonight.
Nikki. Suzanne Hawkins.
Thank you. I came tonight with a prepared speech. I had worked through a number of issues, because I feel that Twin Falls is a very welcoming community, and I'm going off script now. You know, I thought, this last Saturday, I had the opportunity to give out awards to all the volunteers at the senior center for the last year. Last year, when Special Olympics decided they were going to host their state games in Twin Falls, we had a volunteer for every athlete that showed up for those games. They were blown away. They have never seen anything like that in our state before. If you look at our service clubs, if you look at our churches, you look at what Salvation Army does, if you look at the Boy Scouts, if you look at all the committees and commissions that help the city of Twin Falls achieve its goals, this community is a community that helps their neighbors like no other community in the world. I've heard Red Cross say, when there's a disaster in Twin Falls, they don't have to come, because the neighbors take care of it before they get here, and they don't find that anywhere else. We're a unique blend of different personalities and people who come together. We find solutions for our problems. We welcome anyone into our community who wants to be a part of our community. We help our neighbors, and that has been demonstrated tonight over and over and over and over. When I came in tonight, I didn't feel like I wanted to support this resolution, I'll be honest, because I felt like it was written to be a bigger divisive tool in our community. We have two very strong personalities, and both sides of this issue have real concerns, and they have real positive points. I would like to see us, as a community, as a welcoming community who includes everyone, come to the table together and maybe take this resolution and the safety resolution and find common ground and come up with a resolution that is Twin Falls. It is not Boise, it is not Ketchum, but it represents Twin Falls at its core, that it includes those who want to see the vetting increased for refugees to help their security so they feel safe. They have a right to feel safe. They live here, too. But at the same time, that when we have refugees, that we can truly help, that we reach out that hand as neighbors, as humans, and help each other. And so when I vote on this resolution tonight, it is not what you're reading in front of you, but I would like to encourage us as a council to create our own resolution that represents Twin Falls for what we are and who we are and not copy what our neighbors have done, and find a common ground that welcomes our refugees and welcomes our legal immigrants, and at the same time welcomes those that were born here and are the heart of this community that keep it going. And I don't want to, I guess I want to get off my soapbox, but I want to say thank you to everyone, everyone who spoke on both sides of this issue tonight. You really made me look inside and do some soul searching on how I feel and what I can and want to support in this community, and it's because of every one of you that Twin Falls is what Twin Falls is, a very welcoming place to all.
Thank you, Suzanne. So I would echo just a couple of comments that I've heard from a few of the council members here. So in all of my experiences dealing with folks who were here visiting, perhaps it was a company looking to possibly locate here, you know, I work at the Chamber of Commerce office, we see hundreds of visitors every day. Without exception, the first thing I hear from them when I'm talking about their interaction in the community is how friendly and how kind and how welcoming our community is. And that's not just Twin Falls, that's the entirety of the Magic Valley. I do believe it is what makes us unique and special. I think it is more important than our natural setting, it's more important than the miracle of agriculture here, it's more important than all those things, it's the people who live here. And even in this room, I know, we all have differences. We have concerns about politics, we have concerns about how money gets spent or doesn't get spent. But I don't think there is a one of us in this room that can't say, we want to be kind and welcoming people. And we've had our blemishes in history, and to Councilman Tockington's point, I think we, as leaders in this community, and you as citizens in this community, have an obligation to learn from history and to try to correct those things that have not gone quite the way they should have in the past. But this needs to be more than just words on paper. I am so immensely proud of these Boy Scouts who have come here this evening, and some of the other speakers referred to them, Lee in particular, talking about, they're the leaders of this issue, it's not the seven of us. This is coming from our community. This wasn't the seven of us, two of us, or one of us saying, here's my agenda, I'm going to ramrod down this community's throat, which I have heard from many in this community over the last week. This is about young individuals in our community taking their responsibility to embrace Twin Falls, to celebrate what it's about, to make sure it's a better place for them in the future and those others who live here. And so I am in full support of taking the request, which is that Twin Falls should have some sort of welcoming resolution, because you didn't bring a draft of one, per se. You brought some examples. And I do think that we collectively should take some time to make sure that it is reflective of what we are now and also looking toward the future. So I pulled up our strategic plan here while others were speaking, and we have a focus area in our current city strategic plan, again, not written by the seven of us or the city staff, this was written by the community, with input from the community. And our focus area seven is about a responsible community, and our vision is that the Twin Falls community has retained its human face as it has grown over time. New residents are welcomed and made to feel part of the tightly knit community. This was written three years ago. This was well before the most recent controversial conversation going on in our community. To me, this references a thirty-plus-year-old refugee resettlement program. It represents a history of immigration in our community to take care of the needs of the land. It celebrates the Western migration of, after we were estate and well before we were estate, with the Mormon pioneers who came through. It's just who we are, and I made similar comments many, many months ago at the peak of this initial conversation in our community. And I'm thankful that we have been through a very difficult time as a community, but that we can have a civil conversation to talk about putting on paper what it is we are and what we want to be. So again, I thank everyone for being here this evening and being a part of this conversation, and I would certainly entertain some direction from the council. Chris Tockington.
I would request that the council direct the city manager, city staff, rather, to provide a first draft of a Twin Falls as a welcoming community with language that may be modified as we jointly discuss it.
Second. It's a motion by Chris Tockington, seconded by Greg Lanting, to direct city staff to give a first blush at this and to have some further discussion as a council. Suzanne Hawkins.
I would like to amend that motion to include that city staff reach out to some of the public who spoke maybe tonight, and if, offer them a chance to by email or however, submit ideas of things that they should, think should be included or should not be included in this, and just kind of get a little more pulse from the community and make sure it's truly a community document and not a city staff document.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion by Suzanne Hawkins, seconded by Chris Reed, to encourage staff to reach out to the community and some who spoke this evening to do our best to gather community sentiment here. Chris Tockington.
Well, I just wonder, Suzanne, we've had twenty-four speakers here tonight, pro and con, don't you think this is hearing the community?
I do think it's of the community, but I think before we put pen to paper, it's a good idea to maybe give them a chance to submit what they presented tonight so that staff doesn't have to go back and listen to the recordings.
Any further discussion on the amendments? Seeing none, Sharon Rolcall vote, please.
This is on the amendment?
On the amendment, yes.
Sean Barriger?
Yes.
Chris Tockington?
No.
Greg Lanting?
Yes.
Christopher Reed?
Yes.
Ruth Pierce?
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins?
Yes.
Nikki Boyd?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. So is there any discussion on the main motion as amended? Sharon Rolcall vote, please.
Nikki Boyd?
Yes.
Sean Barriger?
Yes.
Chris Tockington?
Yes.
Greg Lanting?
Yes.
Christopher Reed?
Yes.
Ruth Pierce?
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Once again, thanks to everyone for your input this evening, so staff will begin working on a draft, and this will certainly be noticed up on a future agenda before the council takes any action, we'll have some opportunity for conversation. So with that, I'm going to ask that we take a six-minute recess, and we will reconvene at 2:00.
Thank you. So I'll reconvene the council meeting for Monday, April 10th, after our short break. So the next item on the agenda is a request to reappoint Susan Petrazelli, Chad Debbie, and Gerald Martins, as well as appoint Ross Conlon to the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. So Susan, Gerald, and Chad, or Susan and Gerald recently completed their first term, full term of three years, and Chad completed a first partial term of one year on the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. All three of these members have had great attendance and participate on the committee. Recently, city staff published a vacancy for the committee but did not receive any applications. The council recently confirmed appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there were some well-qualified candidates for the planning and zoning that were not able to be appointed because we just had more applicants than positions. And so staff reached out to those applicants who were not appointed to planning and zoning, and one of them, Ross Conlon, has expressed interest in this opportunity. Councilman Tockington, Chairman Brad Wills, city staff and myself recently interviewed Ross. He spent thirty years previously with the Pocatello and American Falls Police Departments, has a great desire to serve the community, and we felt he would be a great addition to this committee, offering a different point of view on growth and development. So it's important to point out that this particular commission or committee has some specific seats that must be filled by various sectors, engineering, developers, so forth, but it also includes at-large members, and that's a position that Ross would fill. So he comes with no engineering or development background, per se, but could really be kind of a voice of the at-large community. So I would request that we appoint him to, appoint all of these folks, the reappointments as well as Ross, to the Impact, Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Chris Tockington.
Well, I'd just like to make one additional comment to your relation of what went on. Even as Mr. Ross Conlon has not been involved in the development, been in public service through the police department, he does understand that the Impact Fee Advisory Committee is a function of a policy that has been approved by courts throughout the state where the cost of growth can be assessed to future development, and those funds will be applied toward four categories of police, fire, streets, and park improvement. So there is no question as to whether this is, I guess the term is constitutionally upheld in the state of Idaho, and I would certainly think he'd be a good additional candidate for our group.
Ruth Pierce?
I'd like to make a motion, if you're ready for that.
You bet.
I would move that we reappoint Susan Petrazelli, Chad Debbie, and Gerald Martins, as well as appoint Ross Conlon to the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion by Ruth Pierce, seconded by Chris Reed, to approve the appointment that was requested. Is there any discussion? Mitch Humble.
Just one little point of clarification, the vacant position, and we forgot to help you out with this on your report, Mayor, but the vacant position that's going to be filled by Ross is a partial term. The other three are full terms, three years, and I think Ross's is a two-year term, if I'm not mistaken. It might be one, but it's a partial term.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, Sharon Rolcall vote, please.
Chris Tockington?
Yes.
Greg Lanting?
Yes.
Christopher Reed?
Yes.
Ruth Pierce?
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins?
Yes.
Nikki Boyd?
Yes.
Sean Barriger?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. And next is a request to adopt an ordinance for a zoning district change and zoning map amendment for approximately 2.14 plus or minus acres from C-1 PUD to C-1 ZDA to develop a hotel and accessory uses, the maximum building height of 55 feet on property located east of 1788 Washington Street North. And we have Mitch Humble.
I had pity on Renee, and I let her go home a little early tonight. I told her I would go ahead and take this far. If you'll recall, back on January 9th, the city council had a public hearing on this request. At the end of that public hearing, approved the request and directed staff to prepare an ordinance. There's been some time to get all those details straightened out, because there's a few conditions on that, but in the end, we have the ordinance ready for your adoption tonight. It is an ordinance, and so adoption of this ordinance will require the, if you want to do it tonight, will require the suspension of the rules and all of that jazz. So if you have any questions, we can try to answer them for you, but otherwise, it's pretty straightforward, adoption of ordinance.
Thank you, Mitch. Questions for Mitch? Council wishes?
Do we have an ordinance number?
It's ordinance number 2017-10.
Chris Tockington.
I would move to place ordinance 2017-10 on third and final by title only under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion by Chris Tockington, seconded by Ruth Pierce, to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2017-10 on third and final reading by title only. Is there any discussion? Sharon Rolcall vote, please.
Greg Lanting?
Yes.
Christopher Reed?
Yes.
Ruth Pierce?
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins?
Yes.
Nikki Boyd?
Yes.
Sean Barriger?
Yes.
Chris Tockington?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Sharon, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance number 2017-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Twin Falls, Idaho, rezoning real property below described, providing the zoning classification therefore, and ordering the necessary amendments to the area of impact and zoning districts map.
Suzanne Hawkins.
I move approval of ordinance 2017-10, second.
Motion by Suzanne Hawkins, seconded by Nikki Boyd, to approve ordinance 2017-10. Is there any discussion? Rolcall vote, please, Sharon.
Christopher Reed?
Yes.
Ruth Pierce?
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins?
Yes.
Nikki Boyd?
Yes.
Sean Barriger?
Yes.
Chris Tockington?
Yes.
Greg Lanting?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have a presentation on the Twin Falls Urban Renewal Agency Main Avenue redevelopment project. We have Paul Johnson with CH2M. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I was asked, again, my name is Paul Johnson, and I'm the owners representative for the Urban Renewal Agency on the Main Avenue project. We have, I think, an exciting update for you tonight. I was asked to give the same update that we presented to the Urban Renewal Agency. I was asked to give the same update that we presented to the Urban Renewal Agency. The bottom line is, the project is just under budget and on schedule so far.
That's exciting.
Do I have three minutes?
Presentation complete.
I'll keep it very brief. This picture on the cover of the monthly report is from the March 24th pre-bid conference. There were one of three walkthroughs with large groups of contractors interested in bidding the project. GUHO Construction had arranged that. Again, they are our construction manager, general contractor managing the project. This is a summary. As we talked the last time, there was the landscape removal contract of $56,538. About $9,500 of that is being turned back into the URA from savings on that landscape removal that took place in February. Item two, we went to the URA board last week with a request for the overall amendment for the guaranteed maximum price on the project. After assembling all the bids from the various subcontractors, most of them from Twin Falls, most of the awards are going to Twin Falls subcontractors. I think there's just one from, away from the area, all the rest are from Twin Falls. That totaled $6,389,570. So, when we add the two together, the total GMP shown on item three is $6,446,115. And that is about $54,000 under our budget. Tomorrow at the groundbreaking at 12:30 PM at Columbia Bank, no doubt, there will be representatives from the URA and the city talking about the value of the project. We like to talk in engineering terms about cost-to-worth ratios or cost-to-value. The value will be tremendous, obviously. I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, much greater than the $6.5 million price tag for the project. My part, our part as a team, was to bring the project in within the $6.5 million budget and we believe that we've done that. The earlier estimates by GUHO were $6,446,000 and by OTAC, the design firm, $6,493,000. So, we were within 4/1,000 of a percent of GUHO's prediction and within 3/4 of 1% of OTAC's prediction. So, those are really good numbers. In addition to that, we've afforded some additional scope within the $6.5 million budget. We have several fire hydrants that will be included on Main Avenue. The others are on the seconds, but it'll be a safer street in the future with new fire hydrants on Main Avenue in addition to everything else with the streetscapes and the brick sidewalks. We'll have cast aluminum light poles instead of the cheaper fiberglass light poles. So, we were able to afford that within the budget. And the storm drain system is upgraded, so it will handle more storm flows. There are other projects downstream outside of the project area that will need to be improved in the future, but Main Avenue will have a more comprehensive storm drain system to handle storm events. So, that's some additional good news afforded within the budget. The rest of this is just how the GMP was assembled by GUHO and it all came in within the budget. They have every intention of returning any savings back to the owner at the end of the project. There's a 5% contingency held within that $6.5 million. If it's not tapped into or if we take only a little bit, the rest of it will be made available for other URA projects. All right. Just a quick note on schedule.
I'm sorry, Suzanne Hawkins had a question.
Sorry. Do you know how, if you were able to find a way to incorporate flagpole holders in all of that as well? We talked about that last time, but you weren't sure.
Yes, I have an update on that just right after this point.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I won't get ahead of you.
Okay. Thank you. So, we're right on schedule. Again, groundbreaking tomorrow at 12:30 PM at Columbia Bank and that'll be right after the State of the City presentation that I understand is at 11:30 AM at the Orpheum Theater. Okay? Construction will begin, or actually demolition will begin in Area 1 as you see from Gooding to Shoshone, and that will take place beginning April 17th. So, each block will take about two months to rebuild and there'll be an overlap of about one month per block. So, we anticipate substantial completion of the project on October 31st, 2017. Right on schedule. Now, to the point about the flags.
Excuse me, Paul. In all businesses and the respective blocks, know when their time of maximum discomfort's going to be?
They've been generally informed and they will be informed specifically on a block-by-block basis. Rob Kloninger is the superintendent and he's already spending time with the businesses on the first block to talk to each of the merchants so they understand what's coming up with the sequencing of the project. There will be a lot of disruption on a block-by-block basis, however, the businesses will remain open. The accesses will be both from the alley entrances where the public parking lots are mostly along the seconds, and then also in front of the businesses all through construction. We'll have compacted gravel lanes leading to the front doors of each of the businesses. So, Rob will be working out the details with each of the business owners well in advance of construction so they understand what's coming up. Does that address your question?
We have a couple of other comments. Did I answer your question, Chris? Suzanne Hawkins?
Thank you. Kind of a follow-up to that. Last week, we heard from one of our business owners that so many construction vehicles are parking in those back parking lots and near the alleys that it's basically closing the alley entrances now. And as we start working through this, that was a concern. Do we have a plan for where construction workers can park and stay out of the way of consumers?
We do. There, the vehicles that are there now are for probably the alleyway utility project, which is fairly limited in duration. Just the utilities that are necessary to serve the remodeled city hall are being done now. And then, of course, the city hall project itself, which is separate from the project that I'm talking about. But GUHO has arranged, we've leased space right nearby for construction trailers and for the contractors to park, so we will not be taking up any parking spaces for the public. And if any of the construction crews violate that, then they'll be reminded and asked to move their vehicles. GUHO will be right on top of that.
Thank you very much.
Ruth Pierce?
So, Chris, I wanted to mention that Nate discussed at a URA meeting that he actually personally visited every business on Main Street and talked to them about the schedule. So, there actually has been some reach out, but I know they're going to do some more.
And I think that first block is be kind of kick everything off and every, all the other blocks, if they've had their head in the sand, they will no longer have their head in the sand. Yeah. A little bit overkill, but we want to make sure.
Okay. With regard to the flag display tradition, the Lions Club, pictured here is Mr. Mervyn Mueller of the Monarch Twin Falls Lions Club. They've had a tradition of displaying the flags on eight holidays per year in front of participating businesses. Those holidays have included Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Flag Day on June 14th, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, and Veterans Day. So, businesses who wish to participate pay a nominal fee of $35 per year. All of that money goes to the Lions Club and they give all of that money, 100% of it, to provide eyeglasses to people who can't otherwise afford eyeglasses. At our company, CH2M, we think that's a very honorable program and a tradition that we'd like to see continue. So, I've checked with our office manager and we're willing to pay for the sleeves that would go in the sidewalks to continue the tradition in front of the businesses. This is one example in front of a business on Main Avenue. The flags, the poles are about 10 feet tall. It was a windy day, so we have a great display of the flag. And again, the Lions Club takes care of this, not only for Main Avenue, but for other areas of downtown. And the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts also continue the tradition around other areas of Twin Falls. So, the question right now is, it's a technical one of where will the sleeves go? Because we have about 26 businesses who participate, dozens more who could. So, do we put sleeves in front of every business? How do we make it so that it's not a tripping hazard or unsightly in some way? So, we're trying to work those details out right now with the design team and the construction team. And then, at your, at a meeting a month from now, we'll present options for the URA board's consideration. And then, if you like, I'll come back and give you their suggestion on how we can handle that. There's been a suggestion of having flags in limited areas and businesses contribute to that. There's been a suggestion of only having flags in front of the participating businesses and there's also a suggestion that they be potentially in front of every business. So, we need to get that figured out because construction is starting later this month. But what I'd like to request of city council this evening and what we ask the URA board is just for consensus that we should continue to pursue the technical option so that we don't have to have the Lions Club drilling holes in the sidewalks later on. We take care of it in advance. So, is this a tradition that you would like to see continue?
Thank you. And I think it's very generous of you to offer the sleeves. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that's the point.
I would take that as general consensus head nodding amongst the councils.
How could you go against the Merck and Flack?
Exactly. If only you would have had a Boy Scout requested.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next is a presentation on the revised enforcement response plan associated with the pretreatment program that is to be submitted to the Environmental Protection Agency for review and approval. We have Jason Brown.
It's a glamorous title, Mr. Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Before I get started, I'd been asked to talk about a, an award that the engineering group got for an engineering and excellent award for the clickbar pretreatment facility. I was able to go accept that today at a conference up in Boise on behalf of the URA and Twin Falls staff along with our design firm for that. And so, that was an opportunity that was good to show our involvement in a, in a project with our community partners. So, the enforcement response plan is the document in which helps us, guides us in enforcing the federal and the city pretreatment standards here with our industrial partners. And so, what, the last time that we had actually revised the ERP was about 20 years ago. And so, as things have changed and through some conversation, discussion with the Environmental Protection Agency, we've chosen to go through and revise this document. It helps us and guides us in how we interact with our industrial partners here in town. And so, it's a requirement of the pretreatment standards as a, an accepted pretreatment program which the city of Twin Falls has. We have to provide this document to the EPA for their review and approval of that. And so, we're coming here to the council tonight to present this, get any feedback and comments from you with the final, and then at a later date, come back and after the EPA has reviewed that and get your approval for the overall program. And so, tonight I've asked CH2M, they're the, under contract to operate our pretreatment facility and they're really the ones that have put the effort into this document and the effort into this presentation. So, I've asked our pretreatment coordinator, Lance Nielsen, to come and present this to you. And then, any questions will be answered by committee if needs be. So, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Lance and we'll start with the presentation.
Thank you, Jason.
I'm Lance Nielsen.
Welcome.
With CH2M. And we have a presentation with PowerPoint and hopefully it will work.
It just went to sleep.
You want me to have Dave deliver coffee?
Thanks.
Sorry.
Sorry.
How about some hot chocolate?
Oh, you just need to, Sharon, can you flip the switch? Thank you.
Okay. Tonight, we're going to talk about the enforcement response plan and the new surcharge program that we hope to implement. So, what the enforcement plan is, like Jason mentioned, is just outlines what the pretreatment personnel can do given a certain situations such as violations. Why do we need it? It is required by the EPA. It falls under the Clean Water Act and 40 CFR 403. So, this is our current enforcement response plan. Like Jason said, it hasn't been updated since, or in the last 20 years. This is the first revision of it. The issue that we have with it now is that the wording of it's confusing and it doesn't allow for a lot of wiggle room for us to work with our industries in the area. So, with our current enforcement response plan, it has enforcement guidance. So, when a violation occurs, the industrial pretreatment coordinator is aware of it. He or she is able to make or determine the action that needs to happen with it. If it can just happen with an informal notification, they can just go ahead and do that and document it. Other cases is that they have to compile that information and then send enforcement action to the control authority, which in this case is the city of Twin Falls. And once the city of Twin Falls decides what they want to do, they implement enforcement So, what we did, we took last, or the information from the last six years and compiled it into this graph from October 2010 to September 2016. We had 1,329 violations, both major and minor violations. With this, this amount, 80% of them came from only two categories. When the EPA sees this amount, they freak out a little bit. They're like, okay, what's wrong with Twin Falls? Are they not caring or what's wrong? So, we are hoping, or we are, we are hoping to continue on or to improve the amount of violations that are reported and hopefully reduce the amount with our new enforcement response planned, plan and surcharge program. So, the modifications that we are making to the enforcement plan.
So, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. Chris Talkington has a comment.
Could I just go back to the BOD and suspended solids? Why is EPA so surprised when we do food processing? Are they not a major contributor to the burly area food processing plants? I mean, are we that much of an anomaly in the enforcement?
Well, the reason that we are so high is because how often we test, how often we sample. A lot of areas, they only sample one, two times a month or more in some cases.
Okay.
So, that's the reason why we're so high, even if we do have the food industry here.
Thank you.
So, like I was saying, the modifications we're making is relating to the structure and duties. Control Authority will still be able to review the samples, identify discharge violations. They compile the enforcement actions and then send the notifications off to the industry that has that violation. We are hoping to improve communication with this new enforcement response plan to make life better for the city of Twin Falls and the industries themselves. Once the control authority hears back from the industries, then they can decide, do we need to meet with them to decide the proper course of action or are we okay? Another, once that is done, we can review the history of the industry. We know our industry is pretty well here in Twin and how they operate and how willing they are to change. And then, once we get a good baseline, we can decide what violations or what enforcement action we need to take.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Suzanne Hawkins.
Sorry, before you get on, and I apologize if I misunderstood or missed- Sorry, before you get on, and I, I apologize if I misunderstood or missed what you were saying. This is what we're going to now, so what have we been doing before that's different than this? If these are the changes? Sorry.
No, that's, that's perfectly fine. So what we currently do is we have a major minor violation situation, and in our current realm, we don't have a lot of flexibility, and we haven't really specified exactly how we're going to handle some of those issues and instances where a, a grayer area, if that's the way I can put it. And so what we've, what we've chosen to do is to, to classify them a little bit more distinctly, and, and so that's what these levels have gone to. So we want to make sure that we have much more front end communication with our industries than what we've had in the past. And so this, this allows us to be able to talk to them, understand what the situations are, what's happening in their, in their facilities, more so than what we have now. It really, if you go over your permit limit now, we really don't have a choice to, to work with you. It, it is what it is. And trying to get away with that, away from that at the EPA's request, as you can see, back to Councilman Tockington's comment before was, we sample our industries every day. We have a, a huge understanding of, a big understanding of what our industries do to our, our pre, our treatment facility, where other communities, they sample a little less frequently than we do, and even oftentimes, the industries are required to sample themselves. And so we understand, and it's inherent in our program, that we're probably going to have more violations in our new program, or in our, in our current program, and we're trying to get away from having to report tho, the instant, instances that we don't even see, they're, they're a minute blip in the radar. And so that's really what we're trying to do, and the EPA is, has encouraged us to go this way, that we are able to have a little bit more flexibility with our industries under the new program, where we don't have under the current program. So, did that answer?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Yep.
Uh-oh.
I told you.
Getting the big guns now.
Answered by committee.
Sean knows I won't let him go without speaking.
No, thank you, Mayor, Council, to be able to address this. Kind of one of the, the things hopefully that explains it a little bit different is in the permits that the industries have, they have limits for each item, so they have limits for B O D, for T S S, for flow. And in the old enforcement response plan, if they went over those any amount, that caused us to give them a notice of violation. And that's going to be one of the big drastic changes in this, is that working with EPA and relooking at this, is those are able to be changed to what is more of a surcharge instead of a notice of violation, and that will actually bring that down. And as they mentioned before, I think the difference is when you're, when you're sampling that many times, it gives you that many more opportunities to have those kind of violations where they can exceed it. And there are some industries that have very, very small amounts that they can discharge, say 25 pounds a day. So a tiny little bit that they may be over is going down as violations that we're adding towards this and causing that issue. And so as we've been talking with the EPA, and they have given us kind of this guidance of, here's an option that you may look at, I think that, that benefits the industries where it doesn't look like black marks constantly, but it also gives another way of still holding them to those limits that they have, which is basically kind of a capacity of the treatment plan, so that they're just not going above that. Does that make sense, hopefully?
Yes. Thank you.
That's why I brought them. So we broke it down to three levels of notification. So level one is kind of the area that we'll be mostly in. It'll just be a corrective notice, an informal notice, just hey, an email saying you're over the limit, what's going on, et cetera. Level two is a little bit more severe than that. We would put them into S N C, or significant non-compliance status. S N C status has its own federal requirements. If an industry, for example, discharges something and it passes through the pre, or the wastewater facility and into the environment, then that would violate their permit, our permit, and it would be bad all the way around. And so that would put them into an S N C status. With that would come increased fines and a compliance schedule. And then there's level three, which is the most severe of all three levels. We are never want to be in there, so that would result in termination, service suspension, things of that nature.
Chris Reed.
So with the historical data that you currently have in place, where would most of those fall?
They would, most of them would fall in the level one, or even before that, just as Sean mentioned, that they're just little blips, that we don't even see them.
So they wouldn't even fall on, on one of these levels?
So under the new enforcement response plan, the control authority can identify and verify the non-compliant, compliance events, evaluate for the significant non-compliance as federal regulations demand, and then they can decide, and then they send out the notice to the industries and wait for a response back from them. And with that, the control authority has an option of either continuing on to escalate enforcement, or to decide not to further go after the enforcement action. In all circumstances, documentation, documentation does happen. So this slide goes in more detail of the last one. Just to iterate everything again, compliance authority will see it, they'll send off the notification, and then based on the reply, they'll determine the correct enforcement So seeing how these three levels work, this is a table taken from the actual document of the enforcement response plan. On the left is just the type of compliance, and then middle is the specific nature of the violation, what happens, and then the enforcement response, what level it could So then we get into our new surcharge program that we want to, to get into to help reduce the amount of violations that we are getting. So the surcharge program will have two limits, a surcharge limit or threshold, and a compliance limit. So the surcharge threshold will be at a specific limit, which is their permit times one, one point four their permit limit, and then compliance is when they go over the one point four times their permit. So when they're going over their permit plus 40 extra percent. The surcharge will result in no violations while the compliance limit does result in So these are the rates that apply to the surcharge program. The first column is just the simple one to one point two times their permit limit, and one point two, one point four, their surcharge limit for the next one, and then their enforcement limit is when they go above the compliance limit, and each one of those has a corresponding rate that goes with it. And then once they pass the one point four times permit, or the compliance limit, we are required by federal regulations to implement administration fines. So first day is 250, 500, second day, and then so on and so forth, until the fourth, and so on, is a thousand. And then also, we talked about when they have consecutive days of surcharging, surcharging, that should actually read four to five days instead of three to five, but then it's a fine as well, and then when it's six or more consecutive days of surcharging, then they, it's a thousand dollar fine. Also, when they are six or more days, they will be put into a significant non-compliance because by then, they know that they have a problem, and we can see it or feel it at the wastewater facility.
And do those fees go to the EPA, or to?
No, those fees are, those fees are put into, I believe, the general fund, is that correct, Lori?
No.
Wastewater, in the wastewater fund. So those, those are, those are the funds that go to the city themselves, or to our, to ourselves, but it is required by, by federal law that we actually have a graduation, a graduating escalation of fines as well. So that is, that, that goes to the city.
And I gather there's no appellate process on this?
So we, we, there is, and that was part of the, some of the front end communication. If we've gotten to this point, we, we have, we have some serious issues going on with the industries. They're, they're in a situation where they're violating constantly. So the levels were really set up to help some of the front end communication and be able to get out of this point. And so that's where the communication part really comes in with the, with the industries and working with them, and we have, and you'll see from some examples later in the presentation, and we've, we have in the past, we've been able to work with our industries, and instead of us collecting the money directly, we've, we've asked them to put it back into a, into their facility to help them resolve the problem. This is, what we're trying to do is, is let them know, okay, we're, we're following and implementing the rules, but if there's a way for us to help you not get to this point, we're, we're willing, able, and wanting to do that. So that's, but yeah, those, those go to the city.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. So this graph is a comparison of the violations that currently happen, which are in purple, and then a comparison of violations that would have occurred if we would have had a surcharge program six years ago, which is the gray. Comparing the two, there's a 60% reduction. This is a huge amount, which makes everyone happy, makes us happy, makes the industries happy because they don't have to report their violations, and the EPA is happy in the end as well. So we have made three different surcharge case studies to show you how this works. Out of the original, or out of the 13,000, 200, or 20, wow, excuse me, out of roughly the 1,300 violations that did occur over the last six years, roughly 69% of them fall into this example. So this is just a minor permit exceedance. They have a permit limit of 2,300. They exceeded with the actual discharge of 29,000 roughly, or 2,900. Under our current E A P enforcement response plan, it's about a $717 fine with a minor violation. With our proposed surcharge, it would be a $1,300 fine with no violation. The reason for the increase in fines is, one, we are hoping to, or excuse me, we're encouraging our industries to stick to their permits, not to exceed them. And another one is when they discharge extra, they are taking up extra capacity at the facility, so that could, so that limits others as well. This is a major permit exceedance. This occurred 30% of the roughly 1,300 violations. You can see the numbers again, 2,300 for a permit limit and almost a 4,000 for actual discharge. This puts them over their compliance limit, so it's roughly a $2,000 fine with a major violation. Proposed surcharge is roughly 2,600 with a violation. Now, bad days do happen.
Ooh, that's scary.
Don't worry. They do happen. Out of the 1,300 violations that we did see, this happened less than 1%. So these are really, really rare occasions. So they violated all of their permits. This would be a $20,000 fine under our current one with a violation, and proposed would be roughly a $79,000 fine with a violation. However, as Jason had mentioned earlier, that sometimes we can, can talk to the industry themselves and say, okay, you have this fine, but what happened? Did a machine break down, or was there lapse? And so we can take part of the fine and, and put it into your own system, trying to update certain machinery, or training, or things of that nature. Again, I just want to express that this is a really rare occasion.
And if I can here as well, so we understand that this, it's a, it's a large number, but we also, in this particular situation, it, it's not an exact correlation to an event that happened recently, but a, a very similar situation, and we actually saw an impact down at the treatment plant that, that really could have put us into a situation that was, that wasn't good for us. We, we had a potential of, of seeing more T S S out of the backend of our treatment plant. With the, with the upgrade to the treatment facility, I F A S system that we've done over the last couple of years, where we were able to, to manage this a little bit better. And again, it is, it is less than 1%, and as Lance was saying, we really, this, this one is not to go out and, and try to get money from the industries. These events really are caused by specific potential malfunctions in industry pretreatment facilities, or something that happened inside the facility that then they could use this money to go and fix, and hopefully that these events don't happen. And so it is a scary number. We had a lot of internal discussion about this number, but it is, it is a situation and scenario that, that can and has happened recently to, to us.
Chris Tockington.
Jason, this is a little bit off track. We've been primarily addressing suspended solids and B O D, but with our settlement ponds, which I think I'm correct, the primary purpose is to improve the water quality by further remind, or removal of phosphorus before it percolates back into the wa, through the water table into the snake. We have no process for receiving credits, attaboys, anything positive for that. Is that my understanding, the EPA is so befuddled that they don't know how to handle it?
It, it is, the phosphorus issue is something that isn't in our current enforcement response plan. The, the new enforcement response plan allows us to, if it, if we get to that point with the EPA, we actually have a meeting tomorrow with the, with the EPA and the local water advisory group here in town. Since, since some of our last meetings, there hasn't been a lot of updates. The EPA wants to come back and, and present their presentation to a larger group of people. And so, but under the current reality, there, there aren't opportunities for attaboys and...
Well, it looks like they're afraid to move out of their comfort zones, especially for being a little bit brusque on this, but they want to hold us accountable, rightfully so.
Yep.
But our, our upgrade in our water system, we're, we're providing almost tertiary quality water to the Snake River. The phosphorus, phosphorus is just another addition that through our innovation, our cost to the taxpayers, we're providing additional water quality. It just seems that they are only interested in looking at the negative.
And, and we've, we, through our conversations with the EPA, we have tried to point out just that in the sense of, hey, we have, we have tried to implement newer technology, technology that helps us and the water body itself, the Snake River, improve. And so that has been, that has been a, a sounding board for us from the city and city staff in those conversations that we have tried, and we are, we are on the forefront trying to move forward for better water quality.
I appreciate that, Jason. I'm sure I could be kept in the loop on how that discussion goes.
Yep, we'll, we'll have that conversation tomorrow and then, and update as, as, as needed through that. But, and we feel that this program, it was time to, to look at the enforcement response plan. Because time had changed, the regulatory environment had changed in such a way that we, we want to continue to improve our relationship with our industries, but also improve our water quality. We have the benefit of having the upgrades to the treatment plan, we have, or treatment plant. We have some flexibility there, and, and we really believe that this, we're on the right path of, of what we're doing. And then also, the EPA has really encouraged us to, to look at, at changing our, our pretreatment program along this process. The, the word violation obviously has a, has a certain meaning in the, in the environmental regulatory world, and any chance that we can get away from using that specific language, we, we definitely are trying to get there. that specific language, we definitely are trying to get there. And that, I believe that is, that is the end of, of the presentation. So if there's any further comments, or concerns, or questions, we would, we'd tape those at this time.
So a question I have is, so obviously you've had these conversations with our industry partners.
We have.
And their understanding of the process and...
We, we have.
Is supportive a good enough word, or is...
They were. Actually, they were very supportive of we, let's see, two weeks ago, we had a meeting with roughly four of the, the industrial partners. And then last week, on Wednesday, we had the remaining remainder, except for one was unable to attend. We've sent the documentation to all of the industrial users. There were good comments. One of the, one of the eyebrows that raised was on that last surcharging slide. Obviously, that is, we are aware that that is a large sum of money. And so we went back through our documentation to look, is there an ability to be a little bit more flexible in those types of situations? And so we looked back through the document, and we believe that it gives us the flexibility to work with the industries, to, to not accept that money in-house, but also, you know, go back.
Use it to correct the problem.
Yeah, use it to correct the problem. And we've done that since I've been with the city, and I know we've done that before I came to the city. And so they, you know, this helps us document that process. But they were supportive because violations internally to them caused them some issues as well. And so that, again, that, that word of violation really holds a, a specific meaning inside the environmental regulatory world. So...
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council?
I think we all have a very thorough understanding of all of that.
That's better than we did. That's, yeah, it, it, you know, these processes actually help you gain a lot more information and understand the program a little bit more. But, so the next step for us really is, is to submit this for comments to, to the EPA. They have the opportunity to then, then, you know, comment on that. If we don't receive comments for 90 days from them, then by law, it's, they, they've basically approved the changes. So I imagine we'll have some comments, and we'll go back and forth, and then at, at a later date, come back and give an update, and then an approval for that specific adoption of the, the new enforcement response plan.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation of an update on the winter road damage and request to use street reserves to repair a portion of the winter road damage. And we have John Kaden, Public Works Director. Welcome, John.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. One second here. Okay, thank you. Tonight, I asked the, the street superintendent and street supervisor to be here tonight. Mark Thompson, the street supervisor, is gonna give the beginning part of this report. And really, our, our point tonight is to give you an update on what the winter, we all know we had a tough winter, want to give you an update on the toll that took on, on the roads and what we plan to do with it. So with that, I'll let Mark go ahead and get started.
Thanks, John. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to come before you tonight. My part of this PowerPoint is kind of just the first two bullets. Most of you have been, are pretty, have a pretty good understanding of our zone maintenance program. So I'm gonna give you just another brief overview, overview, and then just a little refresher on the pavement condition index, which we call PCI, and then an existing pavement condition survey that we took from Transmap in the fall of 2015. So what is our zone maintenance? Zone maintenance is a preventative maintenance program that focuses on utility, maintenance, pavement preservation, and accessibility. It accounts for 40% of our annual budget between street, sewer, and water. We have eight individual you, zones that we've broken the city up into that, they encompass 78 lane miles. And each year, we focus all our efforts in that one zone. And we may not focus, streets may not focus one, in one area, water may focus in another area. Just, we prefer to have water out in front of us because it's easier for them to get the underground utilities done before we come and then pave over the top of it. So our, our zone maintenance goals are very, our top goal in our zone maintenance program is, is to preserve our roadways and our, and our infrastructure, to provide a safe, accessible community for our citizens. It allows the public works and engineering to collaborate our, our projects. And we can sequence the work efficiently, and we can coordinate the planning a little bit easier. We can perform the underground maintenance prior to our surface repairs. We can do the proper surface treatment over an entire zone. One of our other goals is to overlay one lane mile between overlays and milling inlays. We're trying to replace one mile of sewer and water main. And then we, we follow in behind our seal coat with the sewer manhole rehabilitation, which is, most of you know Mr. Manhole.
Mr. Manhole.
Yeah. So, and then we try and, after an overlay, we try and go back at least a year later and do some type of a surface treatment on that overlay. This just kind of shows our Zone 5 seal coat that will, we will be starting this summer. And this shows the different surface treatments that we're gonna be doing in different areas. It lists the chip seal, slurry seal, and fog seal. And then when we talk about pavement condition index, it's a scale of 0 to 100. Our, a brand-new road is basically 100. Anything, once you start dropping off the scale, the lower the number goes, the less your pavement's gonna survive. So anything below 20 is basically in very poor condition. Zero is completely failed. And all of these distresses, or how we come up with pavement condition index, each, each different distress is measured, and then a certain number is given to those, and then it takes an average of all those numbers. I was gonna throw in the formula, but I, formula, but I couldn't even understand the majority of it. The computer does the most of it. So all these different distresses go into forming our pavement condition index. These are just some samples of, of some rutting. These are pretty high severity ruts. And if you look by his right foot, you can also see where the pavement's actually started to shove into that other wheel track. The picture on the right is what we don't want. We don't want ruts filled with water. Eventually, those are gonna fail. This just shows some different severities of block cracking. Block cracking is usually climate-related. On the left is some pretty high severity block cracking. The one on the right is, is low to medium. And when we do a pavement survey, the, if those lines don't connect into blocks, they have to be measured out individually. So it's very time-consuming when we do our surveys. This one pretty much, pretty easy one to figure out. Alligator cracking. That's where your potholes gonna be. We've got a few of those around town right now.
Yeah, North Elm.
Yes. That's a bad one. So in the fall of 2015, we had a company named Transmap come in. In two weeks, they did what we couldn't do in two years. They drove every city street. And at the end of the, at the end of their project, they were able to give us a PCI number on every single street in the city.
Wow.
So we can use this map now to help guide our surface treatments and where we plan to do our work in the future. Picture on the left is from our Zone 2 fog seal. That particular street had a PCI number of 82. So we went with a lesser treatment, a fog seal. Picture on the right is from our Zone 3 seal coat, which that piece of Washington had a PCI of 74. So we ended up doing a little bit heavier treatment and gone with, went with the seal coat. This is where John gets to take over.
Thanks, Mark. Just to add on to what Mark was talking about with the PCI, you know, he can explain it in way better detail because he's actually done it. He actually gets out in the field, and he's, and he's taken pavement condition measurements. And when he says measurements, he means that we actually go out, grab a sample, you count the cracks, you measure the depth, you measure the width, all that. And you can imagine how long it takes. You don't need to do 100% of the city. You do need a representative sample. But even doing a representative sample takes a lot of, a lot of effort. And so the, when he said they drove it, they used LiDAR, laser, radar, a bunch of other stuff to drive it at, at the speed limit. And they can pick up thousands, tens of thousands of data points per second. And the whole idea is to measure, measure our existing life of pavement, which is what this slide's a little bit about. So like Mark said, on the, on the left-hand side of this chart, we have pavement condition, 100 being brand-new, zero, zero being completely failed. And then you got life in years, time, 0, 5, 10, 15, 20. And this is specifically for asphalt pavement, which generally has a design life of 20 years. And so I think I've showed this chart to you guys before, and then you might be wondering, why am I showing you this? I, I was teasing Mark. I said, this is probably the most important slide, because I think it's what helped me convince Lori to spend some money. But, but really, what we got going on here is, this, this curve here describes the life of pavement. If you don't do anything, any maintenance at all, this is what happens. It'll just, it'll deteriorate over time. And you can see that it holds, it holds its life pretty, pretty good. And then it reaches what we call the critical PCI. And it's the point of no return. And right there, it turns into a gentle slope, from, from a gentle slope into a steep cliff. The whole idea is to, this was created by the Army Corps of Engineers, the pavement preservation philosophy. And in basically for, I don't know how long, 50, 60 years, the Army Corps of Engineers has, has, has basically revolutionized a pavement preservation program through studying. It's all empirical. You know, there's some theory, but a lot of it is tried and tested. And basically, what they, they've shown is that the best way, the smartest and best way to spend your money is as shown. As life starts to go away, and you do a chip seal, let's say, or a fog seal, or a slurry seal, it's, you come to here and it's like, it's like a volleyball. You just gotta keep the volleyball up in the air. That's the way they explain it. And basically, the condition improves from a seal coat, it deteriorates over time, you do another seal coat, and you can see it extends, extends the life. The thing is, is when you do surface treatment like fog, chip, slurry, you want to do it before you hit your critical PCI. Because, here's, here's the main reason. For every dollar you spend up here, if you miss your critical PCI and you're down here, you're, you're starting to get into milling overlay and you're, or reconstruct, which can range anywhere from $15 to 60, 60 times this amount here. So we have, thanks to council support, what I would call a robust and good seal coat program, going back to zone maintenance. We're able to seal coat, or provide a surface treatment, I should say, for almost 100% of every zone as we go in. So seal coat, I think, I think we're pretty much there. Where we're, where we're lacking a little bit in funds, but we've gotten better over time, is in the milling and light and reconstruct. And now I can probably talk about what happened this winter. First of all, actually, is there any questions on this slide?
It's back to the ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure.
Yes. Yeah. So I created, so every, every, every climate, every region is gonna have different experience. This is our actual experience. This is what we spent on our pavement rehabilitation. So the first thing you see, I just won't walk you through this chart. So the first thing you see is fog seal, PCI condition. So this is the pavement rehab type. Fog seal, you're gonna, it's pretty light distress. It's fairly new pavement. And what you're doing is you're rejuvenating the oil. You're adding life to the oil. And so your PCI score's gonna be pretty high. You're gonna add three to five years to that. This is a unit cost. And then I, then I converted it to a lifecycle cost. And I converted it to one. I'll just explain later. So the next, the next...
Theoretically, though, John, every three to five years, you could do that fog seal and, and bump it back up for another, indefinitely?
Well, what happens actually, and it's not illustrated in that picture very well, is every time you bounce that volleyball up, it doesn't quite go as high.
Okay.
So it does, there's, yeah, there's diminished, diminished return. Okay, so the next level, slurry seal, again, you can see the, the PCI, you can go a little bit worse roadway. You get a little bit more life. Slurry seal is basically an oil with, with a, a small particle, like, what size are the particles? Are they... You probably don't care.
Small particles.
Right.
Bigger than a molecule, but smaller than a breadbox. How's that?
No, I'm gonna go get one. I'll be right back. So slurry is light, though. It's not the chip seal. What my point is, is it's not the chip seal that, that aggravates people. You're gonna get five to eight years. Here's the unit cost. Chip seals, a little bit more. You get a decent amount of life out of a chip seal. You can see, and I want to spend a minute on this, we try not to put chip seal just anywhere. We put it in arterios and collectors, places that high, have higher, more robust traffic. We try to avoid the bike lane. If a roadway has a bike lane on it, we either will leave chip off, or we'll maybe use a different surface treatment for the entire road. Harrison's what I have in mind this past year. And I just want to point out that you can see chip seal and slur, slur. Why would we use chip over slurry? It's because it's cost less. You get, you get more life out of it. It is a better product. It does cause complaints. So you got, there is a balance there. So we're trying to balance that by not using it everywhere. Overlay, overlay is when you, you know, we use that mostly collectors or, or grader. You're gonna mill out some pavement, and you're gonna put back a couple inches of, of plant mix. You get 10 to, 10 to 15 years on that. That's probably, 15's pretty high. It's probably 10 to 12. And I don't need to go through all these, but then reconstruct, of course, you're gonna have a really low PCI. You're gonna get 20 years. It's extremely expensive. And this last column's really the most important. So fog seal, you're gonna spend a dollar. And here, when we have to reconstruct, we're gonna spend 34 times as much. So it's really important for us to, to, to take care of our pavement and keep investing dollars wisely and spend it right here, leverage every dollar we can. Any questions on this? Okay, so now I'll just talk about what our experience was this winter. And I know it's been a, a long council meeting, so I'll try to, try to be brief here. What, what you see here is, Mark actually personally went out and he, he's inventoried blowouts. And so we've experienced potholes, which are gonna be pretty small, localized... And so, we've experienced potholes, which are going to be pretty small localized, you know what they are, potholes. And then these are not potholes, these are bigger, they're, they're blowouts, we call them. And basically, what you got here is a freeze thaw, the frost is coming out of the ground. In some cases, you saw the ground rise six to twelve inches out of the ground, and it settles back down, and there's absolutely nothing, nothing left of the pavement. So there's over forty locations. There's, there's over forty locations that were significant blowouts. You don't see, I don't think, any potholes on here, so this doesn't capture the whole picture, but it captures parts that are the most significant damage. So this year, Mark and Dean plan on dealing with the potholes within their existing budget. And actually, most, or some of these blowouts can be dealt with their existing budget, but many of these can't be dealt with. And you see these long, these long red lines, these are larger construction projects, they're just total reconstructs, which leads us to our proposed project list.
Yeah, that's an actual layout of those potholes that would kind of indicate we had some designer-construction deficiencies of them loaded in that end of town there, northeast quadrant.
Yeah, a lot of those are, yeah, residential roads, some of them are old county roads. So, yeah, I was not surprised to see the failures there. Okay, let me back up, before I get into, to projects, Dean's budget this year has been impacted, his ops budget, and so this is a quick update. So he, he printed this update on March seventh, and he's showing how much he spent on overtime. So he budgets eighteen thousand, he's spent fifteen thousand, six hundred as of March. Snow ice control materials only, salt liquid de-icer. You can see he budgets ten, he's spent twenty-two. Fuel costs, these are the big ones. There's other categories, but you can see he spent over half of his budget by March.
Busy summer constructions.
Yeah. Okay, so this project list is above and beyond those cones that you saw on that map, which I said, you know, there's some, there's some on here, but some are not. But these are the projects that we've gone through and we've prioritized. It doesn't get every single, everything, but, but the way I have these divided is the, the top, one, two, three, four, are complete reconstructs. The next grouping is a mill and inlay, and the, I added a contingency to those for each of fifteen percent. And so the rebuild cost is two million dollars, the mill and inlay cost is two-point-three million, total four-point-three-seven-five million. I do need to talk to you about this, this workload. This, this is a, this is a big workload, unanticipated workload. Contractors all over the state are scrambling to, to do this. So there's a lot of, lot of ifs, you know. First of all, if you guys approve the, the dollars to be, to be funded, we have to, in some cases, design the projects. Some of them don't require very much design, they just require a public bidding, but there is a process where an engineer will be involved. And I have collaborated with engineering, they're, they're ready to support whatever we can, we can get done this, this summer. I, I won't be surprised if, if, because of schedule conflict or contractor availability that we don't get everything done on this list. But these are our priorities. And there actually are two more projects. I, I put on here, if you remember, last year, we came back and asked to mill and inlay the rest of Falls from Washington to Blue Lakes. And we, in order to do that, we needed to do the south side of eighty-eight ramps, we just, we just have to do that. So I plugged in, with a number there. As an example, each one of these projects is going to have an unknown. That one, this Falls Avenue eighty-eight ramps, when we get out there and we start sizing the scope of every single eighty-eight ramp, it might include aprons, it could include valley gutters. Wherever best, we, you know, engineering uses their judgment, if we can salvage a component, we will. It minimizes cost. When it's not appropriate to salvage something that's already, you know, it's gone, we won't do it. So I, I expect that there's going to be some unknowns in each one of these categories. That's why I've added fifteen percent contingency.
John, Suzanne Hawkins has a comment or question?
Hi, John. So last year, when we were talking about Frontier Road, where it connects to Falls Avenue by the fire station, I thought we learned that that road belongs to CSI and not the city.
We, we have Frontier on here, you see that? It's a big number. And I actually have, I'm glad you asked. I, I actually have the maintenance agreement, and it looks like we have maintenance, but I do want to, before we spend eight-hundred thousand, I wanted to ask Fritz to, to give a formal opinion on that, and I, he hasn't had a chance to do that yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's a little one, but that C-three parking lot, are you sure we have to put a penny into that dang thing? We may be getting rid of that. I see heads nodding, okay.
It's ours and not the URA's? I thought that belonged to the URA.
Jackie's saying for maintenance purposes, it's ours.
So, the deferred projects on there?
Oh, yeah.
Did you want to address those? Sorry.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Getting ahead of myself. So on these deferred projects, we know we have an issue with Locust, and we know we have issues with Madrona and Addison. Because they either are arterials or behave like a major collector, they're going to require a significant design. Right now, engineering, Jackie, has a contract, it was in place before this winter, to, to do a material study of Locust, so we can size that job. So what I wanted to point out here is that, you know, all these projects we prioritize, they don't get all of our backlog, obviously. These are big projects that need to happen, and we, we have problems on them right now. So you're going to see some spot repairs on Madrona, Addison, and Locust. Dean's going to have to work his magic, Dean and Mark are going to have to work his mag, their magic on, on those streets, meaning they're going to have to zip and inlay when they have failures and just, and limp through it until we can, one, find funding, and two, get, get it designed. Okay, so project requirements, obviously, when it comes to reserves, you can't, I mean, there's no more, there's no more to, I can't exceed budget in this, in this, for this project. And I'm not worried about exceeding budget, I talked to you about unknowns, we have contingency, but also, we're going to phase the projects in a way that we spend, I mean, we're going to construct as we go, and if we get close to the budget limit, we just, we stop letting contracts. So that is zero concern to me. Again, we need to be mindful of pavement preservation philosophy, we need to invest We'll be doing thorough preliminary engineering to identify as many unknowns as possible. Again, we'll be constructing in phases, and that's, that's really it. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'm sure I left something out.
He wants some money.
Oh, yeah.
Comes out of your bucket.
So, so I took these projects to Lori and Travis, and we talked about what we could do with reserves. And Lori has, has explained to me that if we have four-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars set aside in streets reserves as three months operating, and then on top of that four-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, we set aside seven-hundred thousand for Canyon Springs road reconstruction next year, and I need to talk to you more about that. And then another million dollars for unknown emergencies. And then if I take the remainder of reserves, which is about four-point-four million, that, that, that four-point-four could be used to fund projects. And if you saw, I sized it right up to four, almost four-point-four, it's four-point-three-seven-five. On Canyon Springs, the long-term planning group hasn't done their presentation yet, of course, but we've been, we've been in conversation, talking about the Canyon Springs roadway, the side slope, and the trail. One of the, one of the casualties, if you will, will be, you know, there's, there's only so much money, and seven-hundred thousand dollars is being set aside in the street fund to reconstruct the roadway. And, and a million dollars is already being used from the wastewater bond. So one-point-seven can be used for the, the road reconstruction and the slope stabilization, but that's it. So the trail would not be funded, it was estimated at excess of four million dollars. There's simply no funding, unless we didn't, didn't do this. So, thanks for the reminder.
Greg Lanting?
Travis and Lori, I know there's a lot of posturing in the legislature this-
Last year, oh, thank you. Posturing this last year about additional funds, I know that there's a possibility of receiving some funds from, if there's excess money, but if he signs or allows to come in to be the repeal of grocery tax, that will certainly cut into any excess funding there might be, and there was another transportation bill in there. When would we receive those funds, if we receive anything, and what, what is your confidence level where we're going to receive anything?
I have, so I'm not going to give you my thoughts on it, I'm just going to kind of maybe lay out the, the timeline, because I think that the process is yet to be defined by the legislature. I think that if the governor obviously signs the grocery tax, that additional surplus eliminator, which would be then split between the cities and the state to fund road constructions, that amount of money becomes into question about how much of that surplus is available. Now, I believe that that is programmed to go beyond just this fiscal year, and there's other future opportunities, and the state continues to grow at a pretty strong pace. There's the Garvey piece that the governor has yet to sign as well, and that would not necessarily improve any of these projects that, that you're looking at right here. There's a third piece of legislation that the legislature passed, I believe, that had to do with the emergency winter repair, and that's a third bill that's outside of the process. The legislature appropriated the money, my understanding is the money is available now, but there is going to be a process, and they have to set up a committee that is composed of city representatives, county representatives, it's going to be overseen by the State's Bureau of Disaster Services. And there is some question about the declaration that was prepared by each county and whether or not individuals are going to be eligible for moving forward. So there may be an opportunity there. What I would say is, what John illustrated was about four-point-three million dollars of critical need today. In fact, if, if the city had additional reserves, you saw the deferred maintenance piece of, upwards of twelve million dollars. What's important about that deferred maintenance piece is it's not going to go away. In fact, what's going to happen is it is going to get worse each year as, as it continues to sit unmaintained. So if we receive additional funds from the legislature, we have the opportunities to fill and plug in those opportunities. If not, we'll have to use cash as it comes in to be able to fund projects and chip away at those pieces of deferred maintenance as, as we move forward. Unfortunately, and I think that John and Mark did a great job, this winter really kind of exposed our roads and, and our systems, and while we have a great system in place now, and the council has really risen to the level of providing additional funding for road maintenance and building an eight-year program, part of this is the sins of our past, recognizing that maybe we as a community and as an organization didn't invest in our roadways the way that we should, or as we accepted additional roads from the county, there, those upgrades and processes didn't necessarily materialize. So I think that you're going to see this. The other thing that John has shared with us and our, and members of the city staff is that this is just what you see today. And the, the potential full impact of what occurs below the surface may not be seen for even a few more years out.
I, I would just add to your, your question of prognosticating what the legislature did or didn't do. So the bills still have to get signed or allowed to become law. But secondly, we're not the only community in the state that dealt with this. And so, while it may be additional funds coming from the state, how they're going to get carved up around the state, I know, has been a, a level of debate, you know, discussion of perhaps it's a competitive grant process, it's not just allocated on a formulaic basis. And I think that as, as good as we've been about trying to keep up with maintenance lately, I would suspect that some of our other cities in the state maybe have not done that and probably have greater damage than, than we do. Chris Toggington?
I'd make a motion, I just don't see that we have any choice, we barely have our head above water because of this bad winter, got that big deferred amount that, we don't really know how it's going to be paid for. I would so move the use of up to four-point-four million in reserve funds for this year's road maintenance reconstruction repair as described.
Motion by Chris Toggington, seconded by Greg Lanting, to authorize the use of up to four-point-four million dollars of street reserve funds for the projects outlined. It's their discussion.
I just want to say to John and certainly to your team, I think that the work that you've done in trying to patch up the mess that's out there now is admirable, but I appreciate that it's temporary. I tend to drive Locust a lot because it's a handy way to get from my office to downtown, and that was certainly a challenge this winter. And there are some, there are some fairly smooth spots now, but I don't, I don't suspect they're going to hold whenever everybody keeps driving on them. So, again, I think you all did an admirable job of trying to keep up with the damage that we had, and hopefully this can help fix some of those so that you're not playing patch up on more and more miles of road. Is there any further discussion? Sharon Rokalvo, please.
Ruth Pierce?
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins?
Yes.
Nikki Boyd?
Yes.
Sean Berger?
Yes.
Chris Toggington?
Yes.
Greg Lanting?
Yes.
Christopher Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Get the bids out now, good luck.
Can you kind of give us a periodic update on how the progress is going?
Sure can, yeah.
Thanks.
And next is a request to approve the Zone Seven Waterline Replacement Project to Mesquite Incorporated in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-five dollars. John Keaton?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You've spent an awful lot of money tonight.
So this one, this one was planned. So-
So much for planning.
If you remember, if you remember, Mark Thompson was saying, we're going to be in Zone Five, he was talking about the surface treatment this year, and so you're going to see, we're talking about Zone Seven today, and that's because we're doing utility work in the area of Filer Avenue, from Madrona to Sunrise. We're going to be replacing a water line. We publicly bid this in March, we had two bidders, the low bidder is Mesquite Inc., they're a local contractor. And just to keep council posted, I, I'm going to propose a, a change order to this contract. Since you've approved the use of funds to replace winter damage, this project actually lands in one of the, the projects of Filer that's completely, you know, fallen apart. And so, the, the asphalt paving portion of this would be, of this project, two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand included a trench patch, but instead of doing a trench patch, we're going to repair, like we should, the whole lip-to-lip, the full width of the street. So I need to, I talked to Fritz, I need to award the contract as it was bid in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand- of $242,000 and, and before I were to authorize a, a change order, to change order work out, which is approximately $30,000 if, if council approves. So at this time, I just, I stamp for questions and request council's approval for this contract.
Any questions for John? Suzanne Hawkins?
Not a question, but a motion if you're ready.
Sounds good.
I move that we approve the request to award the 2017 Zone 7 bid to Mesquite Incorporated for $242,505, and after the bid is accepted, then to go ahead with the change order as needed.
Second.
Motion by Suzanne Hawkins, seconded by Ruth Pierce, to approve the request as presented. Is there any discussion? Sharon Rokelbo, please.
Suzanne Hawkins?
Yes.
Nikki Boyd?
Yes.
Sean Berger?
Yes.
Chris Toggington?
Yes.
Greg Lanting?
Yes.
Christopher Reed?
Yes.
Ruth Pierce?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, another opportunity for public input. If there's anyone here from the public wishing to address the council on any issues, now is your opportunity to come forward. Seeing no one, items from the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll, I'll keep this brief. There are four quick items for your calendar. Number one, obviously, the State of the City begins at 11:30. After the presentation and a, and a quick Q and A, there's an opportunity to grab lunch at one of the participating restaurants, and then we will jump over to do the official groundbreaking with the Urban Renewal Agency. I believe that's starting at about 1 o'clock.
Excellent. So it'll be the State of the City, then the ground laying, groundbreaking.
Yeah, and then lunch.
Thing, and then you can go enjoy lunch.
Right.
On your own through the end of April.
Very good. So this week, Phil Kuschlins in town, and he and I have been going around and speaking with several of our partnering agencies and groups about the strategic plan and update really, really good conversations. We hope to present kind of a what we heard response from all the different groups that we're talking about in May. We'll use that as a springboard to have a final strategic plan for the community's review in, in the fall. But I just wanted to let you know we're progressing with that. This week also, on Thursday, is the city-county meeting in Merton. If you're going to that, please, I think, contact the county to RSVP. And then next Monday, we're going to have an early start at 3:30. We're, we're asking you to, to come in so that we can then take a tour of the public safety complex as well as the city hall project.
All right. Chris Toggington?
Just to carry on with ceremonies, the airport terminal is nearly done. They're on the final punch list, and that open house will be at 10 o'clock, April 19th, with the city council's sneak preview most of an hour before 9:15. That's Tuesday, I think, isn't it? Pretty sure. Yeah. And some good news, yeah, we've had a hellacious winter, but we have had 180 additional diversion flights from Sun Valley. And every time one of those planes tips down, the landing fees ring the till. It's a lot of good money, so you can either pray for more snow next winter or say we had our, our good luck, but that is real good news.
Well, I will say one of the other bonuses of the, of the winter weather is certainly the amount of traffic we're seeing down at Shoshone Falls, and it's certainly spreading around town. We had a good weekend at the visitor center last weekend, and I know their businesses in town seem pleased with the number of visitors coming to spend a little time and money. Greg Lanting?
No, just quickly, I, I, my apologies, I won't be able to be at the airport dedication. I will fly out that morning at 6:30. I'll be in the airport that day, I just will be leaving that day, so.
You got to use it. That's even better.
Anything else from council? All right, but that meeting is adjourned.
Boy, we barely got going.